Hereby open Board of Selectmen meeting, December 17th, 2018, 4:30 PM. We are starting about 15 minutes late. We are still in the Rutland Public Library, but we've switched venues in order to have a more conducive environment to our interviews. We will jump directly into the interviews immediately after saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our first candidate out of three is here tonight. First person we'll be interviewing is Mike Nicholson and Mr. Lynch from CPA is bringing him in. You have packets in front of you for each, I believe, and questions?
Hi, sir.
Let me introduce Michael Nicholson.
How you doing, Mike?
Good.
Jeff Stilich.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Leah Layman.
Nice to meet you.
Sheila Dibb.
Mike.
Very nice to meet you, sir.
Thanks for coming out.
Well, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me tonight.
How was your drive from Gardner?
Pretty good. Not bad at all.
Yes.
Probably better than my drive from Worcester.
So we have the packet that you had submitted to Community Paradigm in front of us. We have a list of interview questions. We're going to jump right in. I will probably paraphrase some of the questions as we move along.
Okay.
And for the board, we'll try to keep this an open, kind of back and forth conversation. So hopefully not make this as super formal as we sometimes do. So first of all, thank you for your interest in Rutland. And let's just open this up with you taking a few minutes to tell us about your interest in, your qualifications for the position of Town Administrator in the town of Rutland. And as part of that, can you tell us what you know about Rutland?
Okay. So I currently work as the Executive Aid to the Mayor in Gardner under Mayor Mark Hock and have for the past two years. And while I love my job there a lot and the work that I do, the experiences I feel have been a good foundation to now step back and move on, especially now that I have my master's degree and have established a network both at municipal levels and the state and federal level as well, to be able and try to help other communities in Worcester County grow and succeed. Rutland seems very interesting and unique to me. The amount of growth that's happened here in the past couple of years has been something that really stood out to me when I was looking at the information packet that Community Paradigm had put together. And it made me think about comparing it to some of the situations that we've gone through here, not here, but in Gardner as well. We had a similar development to the Rutland Heights development in Gardner called Cedar Hills. And trying to find a way to have a smart community and oriented and idea-based growth program to make sure that city resources weren't being drained, our identity as who we were as a chair city of the neighborhood and where we are, stayed solid and firm, was a parallel that kind of struck me there. So that kind of drew me to the town first. And then seeing what else the town had to offer, I just thought it was really unique. I thought the Fourth of July Festival was kind of cool myself, just as a quick aside. But it's a neat community that has a lot to offer, and I feel like I would be a good help with the knowledge that I already have on how Massachusetts municipalities work in their executive and administrative functions.
Do they have any more read questions or do you want me to just keep going?
No, go ahead.
Nobody cares. We're going to jump right into finance. It's probably our largest concern. This is a multi-part question, so I'll give you one piece at a time. Can you describe your role in financial planning in your past positions as well as your financial management strategies for ensuring sustainability?
Sure.
And stability?
So in the city of Gardner, in my current role, I am a part of the budget process from start to finish. Around November, the mayor and I sit together and we go over the tax recap sheet together and we meet with our city auditor to kind of use the tax recap sheet as our foundation to then go from there. We take, our procedure is we take an average of four years of our revenue and we take about 80% of that and that's what we build our budget off, just to have a conservative number there. So we have a little bit of playroom if something were to come up in the end that we may not realize or expect. After that, we have, we look at what we had in the past and add in any unit increases that are in our salary line items. And from there, we make our initial budget. Then we'll have a one-on-one meeting with the department heads beginning in January and try to end them around mid-February there, where we talk about what are your priorities as a department head for your department? What are your ideas on increases, decreases, or just modifications to the services that your department offers to the public? And what would the financial impact of that be? So we take those considerations into account and then we ask them to rank their recommendations or changes to their budget from highest priority to lowest priority. And that's how, when we then take a step back after we've met with the department heads, we can see, okay, yes, this is a great idea, but maybe this is something we look at more toward next year. Because right now, this takes precedence and we have to, precedence, and we have to stay within our own means there. Then from there, we take another sit-down with the auditor. We double-check our math, make sure that everything is accounted for, and try to have a presentation for the public and the city council and our city form of government by mid-May, early June, because our budget is due to the council by the second week of June, so they can pass it by July 1st. I understand that the timeline is a little different here because it's a town form of government and the town meeting structure, but I'm familiar with that as well, too. And I think like it's an easy, once you have the process laid out, you can kind of carry that back there. In terms of managing finances, in my role at Gardner, I was in charge of formalizing our financial policies there, taking 10% of free cash and putting that into stabilization, taking 1% of free cash and putting that into our OPEB account. And then we don't touch free cash until after those things are done. And then we still don't touch free cash until April. That way we can account for snow and ice. If that were to be, if that were to have a deficit spend in that line item, we'd have some playroom there. But if it's not, that's what we use for our capital projects. We don't have a capital improvement budget. What we do is we have a list, a rank listing, where we rank our capital needs from top to bottom. And then we kind of go down that list with the remaining free cash we have there. And then further from there, weekly year-to-date revenue reports, just to make sure that we're not overestimating or underestimating, or we need to tweak things here or there. And then lastly, something that I do in Gardner that I would like to carry over here, if I'm lucky enough to get the position, is we, monthly department head meetings. So the department heads, I divide them up into groups of four, based on the services that they offer. We meet once a week to talk about where their revenue trends are going compared to their expense trends, any unfor, originally unforeseen expenses that may be coming down the line, just because things happen every now and then, and just an update on how their department is going. So through all of those means there, that would be how I see a financial strategy and then a management plan after that.
So Rutland has, particularly over the past 10 years, often had more needs than revenues would allow. I would like to hear what Gardner's position has been in that respect. When you talked about your 80% budget start in November, were you talking about level funding, level services, and where have you been going from there? Have you been within the levy this whole time? Have you had to go for overrides? And what's the current tax rate?
The current tax rate is $20.14.
Okay.
And I understand, I think yours is 18, 13. So it's a little different. I would have some sort of my notes here. A little different.
Going down.
Yeah. Oh, really?
Yes.
Oh, good. Good. We went, oh, good. We went down recently, too. We just found out this morning.
Congratulations.
But in terms of, well, first of all, to answer your first question, the 80% is level services.
Level service.
Yes. We do have a separate line item where we kind of track to see how that matches level funding. And if there's a difference there that's significant, we try to see how we can get them to meet each other there. We, Gardner's never passed an override, a debt exclusion, or anything like that with Proposition 2.5. So everything we've done has always had to be within the means that we have through our regular tax levy.
Never?
Never. So we've gotten creative here or there at times, but it's always worked. Our most recent vote for an override happened this past November. We had a surprise projected deficit in our school department of $600,000 due to increases in mandatory net school spending, increases in a contract that was negotiated by the school committee with the teachers' union for wages, increases in just regular prices from here to there. But since our office, or in my position rather, doesn't oversee the school department aspects of it, and the mayor only acts as an advisory chair of the school committee, it was really unforeseen by our office there. So we're looking at finding new ways to kind of add a little layer of oversight to that there, to make sure that doesn't happen then. But we had to go for an override there, which failed. Again, the override for $600,000. So we're working now to get creative and move things around, see what needed to be cut. We found creative ways to do it that have, we've started to implement and they're actually working with great success. Our Department of Public Works, a couple of years ago, moved from brine to rock salt, saved some money there. But then we were noticing that the more we used rock salt and sand, the more we had to send the street sweeper out. And the more we sent the street sweeper out, something got stuck in it and it broke. And then people are complaining that they have sand on their lawn there. So we moved to a new chemical called green salt. It's environmental friendly. It breaks down there. So we don't have to go then sweep the streets as often there. And we're saving money, because rather than buying sand and salt, we, just one thing, while a little bit more expensive, the return on investment's already being in seen there. And it's working great. So even though EPA still requires that we go out and sweep the streets, we're getting ROI there. We've, I also oversaw the writing of a grant that got new fiber optic cable in the city that connected police, fire, city hall, and our senior center. And it was a successful grant. Installation begins next month, and it's going to save us about $8,000 a year on phone bills, because we'll be able to just use one extension system between each of those buildings there, rather than paying for a separate phone bill for each of those. So we get creative when we have to live within our means, but we've always had to do it, like I said, we've never had a debt exclusion override or anything like that.
What's the total Gardner budget?
62 million.
And how much of that is the school system?
Around 40%.
40%. The next piece of this, and you've touched on it, was telling us about your thoughts on free cash and stabilization. That 10% number that you noted, is that 10% into stabilization? So I'd want to hear, I'd like to hear what Gardner's amount is right now in their stabilization fund and how often you've had to tap into it or been able to tap into it. And then when it comes to free cash, you mentioned that you don't touch it until April. When does it get certified? And are you waiting to use free cash until the spring for a specific reason? You just don't want to touch it in the fall?
So what we normally do, we normally have an average of 1.6 to 1.8 million in free cash a year. I understand that's different. It's around 600,000 from my understanding for here in Rutland. So that's why the 10% may seem high for stabilization, and it could be for here, so that has to be adjusted. That's just what we do there. It doesn't mean it's going to work here. The reason we don't touch free cash until after the April area, we will immediately put up the 10% of free cash into stabilization and the 1% into OPEB as the moment we have free cash certified, mid-November and mid, mid-November to mid-December. This year's a little different with the override vote that was put forth and failed. So it took a little longer for us to set the tax rate, and DOR kind of put that as precedence over certifying our free cash. So because of that, there was a little playroom there, but we should have that next week. But we normally, we're projecting around 1.4 to 1.6 million on that. In terms of what we have in our stabilization count, we have 2.1 million. And we rarely ever try to take out of that, just as a way of increasing our bond rating. That way, when we go out for bond, we have a fair interest rate that's not as burdensome later on. We did take out from stabilization fund last year, because the compromise that we had with our city council was that we wouldn't go for a special election for the override. We would move it into the general election that was in November. That way, we wouldn't have to spend extra money on a special election. And the compromise was we took the money to fund this current year for the school department out of our stabilization account. So we took 600,000 out to fund that. So it'll probably be 12% of free cash that we'll put in this year, so we can start building that back up. But when I started in the mayor's office as a general aide, five years ago, our bond rating was a B-A-A with a negative outlook. Since we've put a focus on our stabilization account and putting money into our stabilization account for our bond reasons, we are now at a double A minus with a positive outlook. Did I answer all your questions?
I think you did. I, I was, I had a follow-up. How many years did it take, how long have you been doing 10% at stabilization?
Around four or five.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this has been an aggressive increase to your stabilization in the past few years?
Correct. Yeah. We had, we've recently constructed a couple municipal buildings, our police station being the most prevalent. So knowing that we were going to have to go out for, oh, excuse me, sorry, I didn't see you come in. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Knowing that we were going to have to go out for bond for that, as our over, our debt exclusion to construct the police station failed, we started to build up our bond rating. That way, we knew we would have a interest rate that was good there. But it's been interesting.
What has been your worst-case financial situation, where you had to do something fairly drastic in order to balance the books?
I'd probably say the plan that we were going to put into last year, had we not, had we had the earlier special election for the override vote, was probably what our most dire financial situation would be. It was going to result in the reduction of 18 staff, people. Prior to that, but again, we were able to work around that and find new ways to get creative there through solar pilot agreements and things like that that we could have going. So we have extra revenue now. Prior to that, I'd probably say we had a, this was my, was my first year as a general aide in the mayor's office. There was an issue with, or snow and ice was just through the roof that year. And on top of that, the schools had some maintenance issues that were, just came up unexpected with the roof collapsing due to snow and ice on top of it. The weight came through and stuff. So we had some extra stuff there, extra hits there. The, so that called for the reduction of a couple different sports programs and different, different services that we offered to the community. Trash pickup, our way we did that was changed to the pay-to-throw system, and then we, that wasn't working. So we switched that to, the city now provides each resident with their own recycle toter and trash toter that they pay through their water sewer trash bills. And then we go, our waste management contractor goes and picks those up there, and it's easier so you don't have to go to the grocery store and pay 3.50 a bag to cover the loss that we were having there. So we found, we've had a couple different difficulties that are there, but there's always ways to work through them, so long as you have an open mind.
You touched on this in sort of the first piece of the interview, that we have experienced heavy residential growth. It's, hasn't actually been over the past couple of years. It's been about the past 20.
Oh.
There are a number of very large housing developments, either now in construction as we speak, or coming down the pipeline. Can you tell us how you might assist the town in responding to and dealing with this rapid residential majority growth?
Yeah, absolutely. I did notice that when I was reading the packet that the town gave to Community Paradigm, that those developments were coming down the line. And I understand someone who kind of takes an outsider's view may automatically say, oh, these, all these houses are coming in. That's great for new growth. You're great for the budget. But you also have to realize that there's a community feel and a community identity that's behind where you are, too. So making sure that those developments don't take away from who Rutland thinks Rutland is, and who the people of Rutland call their home, I think would be the keystone to that there. Whether it's looking at what Marlboro did last year in putting a, I wouldn't call it a moratorium on building permits, but they put a limit in their zoning code as to the number of new building permits that they would give out each year. So as a way to slow that down, so the progression was a more gradual progression with these large developments that they had there. That way, it's a less immediate impact on the school assessment. It's a less immediate impact on the police force and the DPW trucks and the fire trucks. There are the city, the other city services that have to go out to patrol these new roads, these new buildings and things like that. So what they do is they limit it to, it's either Marlboro, Amherst does a similar thing. It's ballpark 10 to 15 new construction permits a year is their limit there. That way, it's a gradual progression rather than just an immediate shock. So whether that's something to look at, and finding a new way that, should all these developments go through, to make sure that the new residents and the people who are currently in the town still feel like they're one community together to, be it through the festivals like the Fourth of July one that was put on, or something like that that happens, or just a way to get all the information that's out there to the residents who are currently here, and this may be coming down the pike. Do, things like that, I think would be good. Our Cedar Hills development that I talked about earlier originated as a failed housing development. So then it came through, the developer came in, cleared the trees, put the roads in, put in the utilities, and then backed out when the market crashed. So it was then trying to find how to now use the land that was cleared and all this was put into it, but there were no houses being built on it. That's why we looked at, it's zoned now with a silver, solar overlay, because it was in a residential area. So finding a way that was agreeable to the residents of that neighborhood that was still there. But the city is now making money off of the land through a solar field, and it's not a dramatic impact that 100 houses would have in the area. So different things like that, I feel, could be looked into, especially zoning. I'm not sure when the last time Rutland zoning was rewritten, but we just rewrote our zoning code this past year. We try to update our zoning code in Gardner about every 10 years. So looking at ways to control residential, commercial. I know I saw your zoning map on your website, and most of it is residential, so it's hard to figure out there. But I know we had a specific instance in our residential area where it was proposed senior living facility. It was a three-building complex. It was an assistant living center, followed by a nursing home. And then the third one was an intensive care dementia unit there. But it was, they were trying to put it into a residential area. So, and a lot of the residents of that area thought, you know, this would affect their scenic roads. This would affect their traffic on their street. So we talked about where to put that in zoning and stuff like that. So it's now in a commercial, commercially zoned area. So finding what the issues are that may come as a result of these developments, and seeing where they fit into the broader picture of what the selectmen and the town's goals are for the town in the next five to 10 years, and seeing where they would fit, and then finding a way to work the two together to meld them.
Is Gardner fully on water and sewer, the whole city, end to end?
Yes, except in some areas where we require residents to have wells.
Oh, okay.
Not, but most of the city, I'm going to say 95. We're in the process of taking over our own water department. We began it last year. We used to run our own water department. Then we outsourced, had a company oversee our water department for us. So now we're taking it back.
Taking it back. The reason I ask is, you were talking about a moratorium. We currently have a moratorium on water and sewer connections. However, we do not have a delineated water sewer district. It's been expanding without borders.
Okay.
And based on what you just said, you kind of threw Marlboro in there, which sounds like a construction by law, right? I'm wondering what you think about our situation is right now, and how might taking a look at our water sewer system and the moratorium that's in place factor into controlling housing?
That's an interesting perspective there. I did begin to look into the moratorium, because I did read that in the packet as well, before I give an official answer. I have to look into it more as a disclaimer there. But I feel like those would complement each other, be it a more, and I'm also not sure of the well situation here in Rutland as well. But the, having the moratorium on water sewer connections, I feel would coincide if the town were to do something like what Marlboro, Amherst, and Petersham did with the building permit moratorium cap, in that that would also slow the pace of we need automatically, these houses need their utilities. They need the water. They need their sewer. How are they going to do that? Do they require well or something like that? And that's something that the administrator's office could work with the zoning enforcement officer, the building department, and the planner to kind of, and the DPW director, is that who runs your water sewer here?
Technically, we are the water sewer commissioners. But yes.
Really? Okay.
Yes. DPW runs the water sewer system.
Okay. So representatives from the board and everyone who I just mentioned could meet together to find a way to help these problems solve each other hand in hand as a way to gradually progressing forward should these developments go through, and that's what fits the town's needs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going more esoteric. You ready?
Okay.
How would you define your management style, your ability to motivate the professional staff? How do you seek to develop your employees' talents and help them to thrive, facilitate advancement and mentoring? And how do you think you would build relationships and trust with town employees, many of whom have been here for a very long time, and this is a big change for them? You would only be our second full-time town administrator.
Yes, I did read that, yeah. I like to take my management style as a collaborative style and a respectful. I understand that while my position in the mayor's office, which I like to define as the administrator without the political side of it, is, works very closely with the different department heads. Like I said, we have those monthly meetings and stuff like that. So I understand that while I have to work with them and help oversee them, that they're the experts in their fields. And they understand what they do more than I may understand what they do. So creating that mutual respect to show that, yes, directives have to come from the administrator's, administrator's office, and yes, work needs to be accomplished in the end. It can't just be put to the side. And it has to be done in this, these means in this budget. Is having that open form of communication where they realize that they're heard and they, their ideas are taken with more than a grain of salt and understood helps with the department head level there. In terms of relationships with the staff members, particularly those who have been here forever, just having that personal connection, being around, saying hi, talking to them, having these conversations there and building that rapport of someone who cares about the staff, I feel is key in any situation you are just for morale building, for a sustainable workforce that doesn't have an open and revolving door just because one change happened. And in terms of development and talent, I have an established network already through the Mass Municipal Association. And seeing the professional, professional development offerings that they have, be it through any associations that they have, through the TA Association, or just through any general professional development training that they have, taking someone along if I'm going, or suggesting to someone, hey, you might have a idea if you go to this, and you might learn from other people who are there, too, to develop their talents there. And just working with them, that if they have an idea that they come back with, to see if it's worth trying out, and if so, how are we going to do it? So I feel like that would be, did I answer all your questions? I'm sorry.
Pretty much. Just as a follow-up, will this be the first time that you will be, the first time for you, that you will be the last word when it comes to some management decisions? Because you are the day-to-day top-level manager in all situations in this town. The position is town administrator, but from a day-to-day per- The position is town administrator, but from a day-to-day perspective. And you're the go-to person. You are the last word. How will you handle that?
I think it should be fine compared to even what I'm doing now. Um, there are many cases where department heads come to me saying, this is what I'd like to do and this is how I'd like to do it, where I can give the okay. And while the mayor may have veto authority over the decision in the end, um. I feel like so long as. There's a. Set goal for what's trying to be accomplished overall and the suggestion falls within the goal is easy. Or not, actually, easy might not be the correct word for it, but it's understandable and there's a process to follow to. Be the final word on it and I think that would be fine.
Um, so let's talk about goal setting. You can tell us about your approach, um, for your staff and for yourself. And is there a goal that you've set for yourself that you've been working on in your current position?
Oh, okay. Um, in terms of with my staff, I. Like to say at all our department head meetings. That I talked about earlier, that there should be that open flow of communication back and forth and from there. You can see when something comes up more than once that there's goals that come into there, be it. Increased access to the public by putting our permit applications online on our website or, um. Having office hours maybe outside of the regular business hours so that people who work during the day during. Busy seasons like dog licensing season, voter registration season, um, where we know we're going to have a lot of annual building inspections. Uh, so people can come in and do their permits there, um. Or through, um, increase in efficiency between departments and trying to work there. Come out more and more when you meet with them on a weekly basis and then at the beginning of the year, um. Or I try to do it six months and then solidify it at the beginning of the new calendar year. Uh, that we have a list of goals that by this time around next year. Should either be completed or have some type of progress made on it. So that happened, we, our permit applications for the health department and the building department are now accessible on, online. So someone doesn't need to come into city hall to apply. It just gets sent to the department head's email address, um, and they can approve it, deny it there in an email and return. And then if it involves an inspection, they now have all the information on when they need to go because there's a box saying these are the times I'm available. Uh, or, uh, increased in collaboration through the departments now, we're starting to use our computer systems. A little more, which is slower because some people have been there forever and aren't used to the updated computer systems, which is fine. It just takes a little bit to get going there. So that might not be completed a hundred percent by the time we get there. But file sharing so that if the assessors department has, uh, the. Uh, reevaluation sheet that comes out and the tax collector need it, needs it and the auditor needs it and the administrator's office needs it for the budget. It's on one area on the network that is accessible to everyone. It's a public drive. Whether that's a situation here or not is a different story because this town may have different needs. Um, but. The same overall process follows that from meeting with your department heads, you kind of see what their goals are. And then from meeting with the executive in my position priorly, the mayor, or if this were to go forward, uh, the board here. Coming up with what the goals are for the town and then seeing where the department head goals fit into the overall broad, uh. Broad arching area there and then ranking them and going from there. So I think that would be a good way to goal set.
Any goals you, I know you've been there two years, right? A little over two years. Any goals that you have not yet achieved or just had to set aside for various reasons?
Definitely slowed down the. Efficiency side between departments, just because like I said, certain people just take a little longer to. Learn how this new software works, which again is understandable. Goals that had to be put aside or put on hold. There are a couple. I'd say, um, one that was put aside for a long time that I finally got to do in my. This past summer, um, I kind of suggested it when we originally started there was we created a recreation department, um, from scratch. And it had a summer offering for our students there. We were partnering with our local community college before, but you could kind of, um. Then we were wondering how long it was going to last and then the grant funding ran out for that program. So we had to start it from scratch there. So we did get to start up that department there. Um, we have a movies and concerts in the park series in the summer. Um, every Friday from May to September and every Saturday from July to August, we'll have a movie or a concert in our local park there. Um, finding ways to keep that year round by finding an indoor location. We haven't been able to really do that yet because our auditorium and city hall has been under construction. Um, and recently finished, but now. Finding the revenue to find the projector and the screen and stuff like that, um. Isn't working there. And while it seems like just a small, oh, it's just a movie or it's a concert there. It's a community event that helps build morale in the city as a whole. So those goals have kind of had to be put on the back burner, um, but I wouldn't have to say I've had anything that needs to be scrapped.
Um, an important part, in particular here in Rutland, uh, in the town administrator's role is developing policy proposals. Policy alternatives to recommend to the board. Can you tell us about any particular policies you successfully proposed? And were able to get implemented? And I know you mentioned zoning. Um, I'm assuming that was part of a bigger. Process, but we're talking really more about personnel policies.
Personnel policies.
Well, any policies.
Okay, um, well, I'll give you two then. The one I was originally thinking and then a personnel policy. Uh, the one I was originally thinking was our graffiti policy in the city. We had some issues with slum lords in our downtown area, um, still do, uh, but not as much now where. Things would get graffitied and then it, that would just stay up there and it would just look awful. Um, so we. Did some studying around, uh, to see what other cities across, across the country had done to control their graffiti that was there. So we now have a new graffiti ordinance that's in play. Um, ordinance, our version of a bylaw, um, that says, uh, within, if you notify the police department. Or if someone notifies the police department that you have graffiti on your building, uh, they'll mark it down because they have a database of. Taggings that are happening around the city. So they can say, okay, if it's got this design, it's probably this person who we've gone after before and we know that's them. Um, to at least start that process there. And then, um, the property owner. Has a certain amount of time to remove the graffiti, um, be it through. Any type of funding that the city might have, uh, through grants that we, we receive. We worked with the sheriff's department before to help that there or something like that. And if that doesn't happen, um, it's almost like a ticketing process there. Ju- ju- just to make sure that the city looks nice to people who come in. And that the people who live there still don't think their city is becoming a rundown, trashy place. Um, in terms of personnel. I've been part of the different union negotiations, uh, that have happened there that have involved some policies and decisions that have come there. Uh, we've negotiate, we have seven unions, uh, I in my role have done work with six of the seven, the seventh. Being this, uh, teachers' union. Uh, we don't negotiate, I don't negotiate with them. I negotiate with the, um, fire department, police, uh, police officers, uh, police patrolmen, dispatch and DPW employees. And city hall employees. That's a sixth one. Uh, all of the contracts expire in the same year, uh, so it's easy to sit down and. Start with saying, okay, we're going to have the same slate for everyone and then make sure that the non-union employees are still thought of in those negotiations. Even though they're with the union to make sure that we try to keep an even playing ground with all our employees there. But we've negotiated, uh, moving different health insurance providers. That way his plans change that are more economically feasible for the city to accomplish. Uh, we have that in place now. We've negotiated, um, different policies on the dress codes. Uh, we have casual Friday in city hall now as a result, but in, uh. Return, it's as the, it's sunsetted in our, uh, city hall employees contract. That way should anything. Kind of get hostile in our, um, negotiations, which hasn't happened yet. Um, we're able to have a, something that it's a detriment and a help to both sides. And that once the contract expires, that goes away and the employees love it. So knowing that the employees in the, uh, non-union and union are going to be like, hey, can we get this going? Can we really just solve this and get this to sleep? Not so much as inset policy that's saying you need to document this, uh, like we have a. Uh, similar to a three-strike system if someone's being terminated, um, where documentation has to be kept along the way, a warning given. And then a meeting with the department head, a meeting with the executive, but it's still something that helps get us along the way there. I hope I answered your question.
How do you envision working with the select board?
Uh, I'm excited for it in all honesty. Uh, I have a lot of work with citizen commissions and boards and committees in the past. And, but I understand and respect that how different that this, a select board's role is from those type of positions there. Making sure that the work I'm doing complements and does the work that you guys have as your goals. Uh, for what you see, I'm your representative, uh, and your liaison to the department heads and to, uh. The members of the town when it comes to implementing, um, the policies that you see fit. In my position currently in Gardner, I serve on the Gardner Downtown Business Associations Board. The Chamber of Commerce's Board, I serve as a representative of the mayor. A couple of regional boards with the North Central United Way and, um, the Gardner Food Pantry, the Community Action Committee. Uh, and I realize that there's a strong parallel between me representing the mayor on those boards. And again, me representing the executive here. In a reversed situation. So seeing what the board comes up with and chooses to move forward with. And then being the representative of that decision that's then made in that open form of co- uh, communication. Um, to the public and the department heads. I think there's a strong correlation that can be made there. And just keeping an open form of communication on what's going on in the day-to-day aspects of town hall. Finding out how the board best likes to be communicated with, be it phone calls, emails, sit-down meetings or something like that. And just keeping that constant open form of communication there, I feel would be a healthy relationship to build and maintain.
Thank you. There's a question I'm going to skip. It was about technology, but you actually touched on it several times in some of the descriptions you gave us and it's been fine. Um, so that would be the end of our questions and that's, I wanted to be able to give you time to have a turn. If you have any questions you would like to ask us, this is your chance.
Sure.
Or anything you want to come back to or anything the board has, yeah.
Yeah, is there anything else that anyone else has? I guess we should start with that.
Mike, where would you see yourself in five, five years, ten years?
I would still see myself here if I got the position. I, uh. Loyalty and dedication is kind of big to me. So if I say I'm coming to help Rutland and to work for Rutland. I'd like to still be doing that in five years, uh, finding a new way to grow the management skills. That I have through the position that I currently have. Or would hopefully have and. Just working to find new ways to keep the efficiency rolling and the quality services out to the residents here. And understanding that while things may come along the way that are unexpected or that we don't know now. I'd like to still see, if, if awarded the position, I'd like to still see myself here. I have one, if that's okay. The, I read online about the, um, solar proposals that are here in Rutland. How, I'm not sure if there's been any solar, uh, talks in the past here. Uh, but just because that's something that's been recent with my work in Gardner with the, I, uh, had to write five solar pilot agreements in the past couple of months. Um, what's the process normally here, um, for those and what would your expectations be for that?
Um, certainly you would be involved. Uh, we have a solar committee. One thing we don't have and it, it has come up probably more recently, uh, is any type of bylaw when it comes to citing of solar. So the majority of all of our projects, uh, have been on either private lands or private nonprofit lands. And we are negotiating pilots for those. Um, the assessors office gets involved. Just recently, probably the one you read about was the town's first foray into solar. So we have two municipal solar projects. One of which is going on to our hospital property. It's not taking up, um, the lion's share of the property. It's actually going in a site that's considered brownfield. So we're making a little bit more money from that. Um, the other one is going relatively close to some residential parcels. So of course we're getting, you know, neighbor, um, commentary back as we, as well we should from that. But coming down the pipeline, I think there are twelve proposals in front of the planning board for privately located solar. Um, and there's nothing in place that the town would have any say over citing, um. Certainly we can work things out and when it comes to the pilot, but, uh, yeah, that's where we are. It's kind of a little bit still the Wild West.
Oh, okay. Yeah, like I said, that's something we've been dealing with recently. In my position there, we have some that were established and then working with National Grid to figure out what our capacity is. Because the grid can only take so much solar energy that we have. So they say, exactly. And then once it hits, they haven't, uh, automatically have more room, but, um. That's good to know in case, going into it, um.
Do you find the solars to be challenging or is it, I mean, I'm sure some of it probably there's. Once you have a framework, I imagine it's not completely plug and play, but it's helpful to have a, a kind of successful framework.
Yeah, we include it in our zoning code. So, um, that helps a lot. And then we actually ran out in the places that it was originally zoned, we ran out of land for the developers to go in. Um, so then we include it in an overlay process, which involves the zoning board, which involves the planning board, uh, which involves our city council on our end. The mayor has a, a say in that as well. Um, we also have a development review committee that any development or project like this that wants to go into the city. Uh, we have it go before them first. It's our, uh, health director, building commissioner, planner. Um, a representative of the city council and a representative of the, uh, executive's office. Um, that way they all have a common understanding about everything each other is doing. And if something, if someone says okay to something that eventually is going to come down the line and be an issue for another one of those departments. Uh, it's put out there right at the beginning in the open from the planning stage. So that helps as well too in trying to figure out where these go. And then just keeping an open, uh, form of communication with the public. Uh, we have a public hearing before any solar hearing, um, and things like that help a lot.
And I imagine in Gardner, most of it is, are, most of the solar sites city owned or?
It's about half and half. Yeah, we have pilots with all of them. But it's about half and half. Uh, the most recent one that we had was a, uh, four hundred fifty thousand dollar a year pilot. That we have in our, in that Cedar Hills area that I talked about earlier, um, and that's all privately owned.
How big is it? How many megawatts?
Oh, uh, it's big. They're, they're, they're adjusting it now. Uh, the overlay they requested, not all of it got included. So it was originally going to be a six hundred thousand dollar pilot and it got bumped down to four hundred fifty. So that's why I'm not a hundred percent sure what the megawatts is going to be off the top of my head. But it's big. Yeah, um, and that's good to know that, um, you were mentioning that it was in the state hospital area. Um, a close friend of Secretary Ash and Mass Housing and Economic Development. And he did mention that he did hear that there was some work going on there. So that's interesting.
He got dragged out here to try to help us with our state.
Other than that, is there any other questions that the board would like to know?
I, I might have one. This is going to be a big change for you. Gardner's a relatively big city. It's complex. You have a lot of layers of people. Professionals to work through finance, you know, you've named a bunch. We don't have that. We just hired our first planner a few months ago. Yes. How do you envision that this transition for yourself?
Constructive is what I was going to say, I'd say there. Um, I understand it's going to be a challenge, but so is anything that's new. The network that I have, should I ever have to ask someone a question, I feel confident in not just Gardner, but Hubbardston and Winchenden and Athol. So it's not just cities that I'm calling to. I have enough. And enough of a network out there. I'm comfortable asking for help or just asking you who have been here longer. Uh, and know what the, uh, the process is and the situations are. I feel as helpful there. Yes, Gardner's a city, um, but it's not as big as other cities, um, and. I think it'd be a nice change of pace, um, in seeing how, what I've learned from my department heads. Um, who Rutland doesn't have an equivalent position for. I feel like particularly with HR, uh, and finance, that I have a strong enough background from working with those department heads so closely on a daily basis. That it'd be a smooth transition in the end. Um, I have one last question, if that's okay, just with grant funding. I know Rutland's a community compact, community. Uh, and grant writing's been big with the work I've done in Gardner, uh, just this past year, I successfully wrote, uh, two hundred thousand dollars worth of. Just this past year, I successfully wrote $200,000 worth of grant applications. So is, are there any particular grant funding or grant projects that have, Rutland has looked at in the recent past that you know?
Our previous TA was actually really successful in getting us, you know, maybe they were smaller, but they were grants that we desperately needed. And in fact, I said we had just hired a planner, but prior to that, we used grant monies to get a shared planner out of CMRPC.
Okay.
Yeah, so we had several situations like that where it was professionalizing of maybe a computer system.
Yeah.
And so I think we were probably on track, I think we had four in total. Again, on the smaller side, but it was a wonderful place to start. I think the majority of our focus right now, and God knows if there's grant money out there for it, is, is the hospital property and getting some development there. But also, we only recently got our parks and recreation plan back up, and so being able to go for one of those bigger parks and rec grants.
Yeah.
Would be huge. We really have some deficiencies there.
Okay, yeah. Even go, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna say, we're going through the green communities process.
Oh, you are? Okay, I worked in that in Gardner, too.
So I think we've, I think we've pretty much completed everything.
We're almost there.
Okay, now is that green, the initial step or 2.0? Because they added another layer, this 2.0, okay, that's the one we just received as well.
Yeah.
I know the terminologies.
So that'll be on the, you know, the near horizon, I think.
Okay, good, yeah. A lot of the grant work that I've done in Gardner has been either through the compact or through green communities, or initiating regionalized services. We just, I just oversaw the regionalization of our building department and inspectional services, but we've done regional dispatch in the past, we've done things like that, too.
And I should say, our department heads have been very good about going out and getting grants also.
Oh, good.
So we're very fortunate in that respect also, that it's not, it hasn't fallen only to the administrators' shoulders. It's, everybody's very open and amenable to it.
Oh, good, good. I'm glad. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming in, Mike.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks.
It's nice to meet you.
So nice to meet you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Very nice, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. What was your name, sir?
Skip Clark.
Mike Littleson, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Good night, Mike.
Alright, we have 20 minutes before our second candidate. We could have a discussion now about Mike, although we don't have anything to compare him against yet, or we could jump and try to get a few things done on the agenda, or we could take a quick five-minute recess.
I'm okay without a recess. If you want to.
Okay, without a recess?
We'll get a quick one before we start the next guy.
Sorry, what?
We'll get a quick five minutes before we start the next one.
Okay.
If you want to get something on the agenda done.
We are gonna jump through some agenda items and let everybody ponder, but then we'll take five minutes before our second candidate comes in. Yep. Okay. Could I have a motion to sign Treasury Ward 13?
Show move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have one, two sets of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, November 26, 2018.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for December 3, 2018.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Bob, did you have anything you want to do now, or do you want to wait until the end, or?
I could bring up a couple things now. Working on a couple of RFPs, met, talking about the Heights property, met earlier today, Dave, George and I with RDIC, and I'm moving forward with finishing off that RFP. I know that RDIC is interested in issuing it. Few things just to be looked at by council, but I believe we're making good progress there in updating the RFP. Also, working on the RFP for the money that was appropriated at the special town meeting to do the study, if you will, or analysis of community hall in preparation for the move. If town department's gonna be moving out of the annex, we were able to put that into the central register, so we got some free advertising there, even though it doesn't come under the procurement law. And should be done with that tomorrow, it'll be in the central register on Wednesday, if any of the board members would like to review that, but I think it's pretty straightforward, looking for a couple of renditions from the consultant, as well as the architect, as well as some cost estimates. So the town board will be able to decide what types of improvements will be there, dependent on cost.
Thank you.
I have a question for clarification. The RDIC RFP, that's for the portion of or entirety of the property? Is that how that RFP is?
Well, I think it's most of it.
Yeah.
I think an earlier RFP had it divided up into sections, and we talked about that, and it kind of was, I guess the word is rigid as to how much would be available for different proposals, so we want to make the next one a little more, a little more flexible, but there are some issues with what ends up there and so forth, so it's not for the entire parcel, but the bulk of it.
And I guess that was, I think you said it better than I was, a little bit more flexible than what the original one was.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Also, it was originally written up just for sale, and again, for flexibility and looking at some of the previous documents, when it was turned over to the town, the lease option will be there as well. We're also looking at perhaps contacting CMRPC in the chamber to see if we can get some help in marketing it.
Thank you.
The, I know that Margaret had done quite a bit of work on updating the phone system. The town has appropriated some money to be able to pay for the transition, the work on the, the boards, if you will, the panels in both the town hall and the annex have been completed. So with the board's approval, I'm ready to go forward. I've discussed this with Mike Moriarty, the fire chief, and moving forward with enlisting Crocker Communications to keep moving forward on the upgrading of the town's phone system. I don't know how familiar the board is with that at this point, but I assume there's been some discussion about it. We can wait on that, if you like, and have some, I can get whatever information the board wants on it.
Did you end up needing to go through a bid process, or was Mike working it through the phone system work that they had already done over at Public Safety?
I think it's both. I think Crocker had done the work over there.
They have?
Yeah.
You nodded, yes. Okay. Okay. This has been an issue of some urgency for quite some time. Did the board want more information, or are you comfortable in authorizing Bob to move forward with it?
Defer to Bob.
Yeah. Move forward.
If you move forward.
Could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the board authorized Bob to continue moving forward with the upgrading of the town phone systems with Crocker.
Yes, Crocker Communications.
Crocker Communications.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
And lastly, this one becomes a little more tricky, but I know the board has met with Select Energy going back to last July, and there were some conditions that were put on signing a license agreement, and this is for the work that would be done on the roofs at the Glenwood School in Naqog and installing solar arrays. As we've gotten into this a little bit more and looking at the license agreements and the arrangements, there are more and more questions have come up. There's just been questions about decommissioning, whether the bond should be put up today, in speaking with Beth Greenblatt, there were issues about roof warranties, but I can't say that I can recommend that this is ready to go at this point, but in fact, in listening to, in speaking with Select, and we've had a meeting with them early last week, they were in last Thursday to meet with the inspectors, because the inspectors just got the plans for these roofs last week. So I think their questions have been answered, but they can't issue a building permit until the license agreement has been signed, because Select won't have access to the roof. There are still a lot of questions that need to be answered. However, Select is saying that in order to be able to take advantage of certain tax agreements and the financing that they want to have in place, they need to be on the roofs and working by December 31st. They're hoping that the license agreement could be approved tonight. I think the best that I can recommend at this point, Beth Greenblatt, who has been the consultant for the town on the two solar projects we spoke about earlier with the pilot agreements, she's had additional questions about it. We've set up a meeting, or a phone conversation with her and the representative from Select, Brian Herr, tomorrow. I think the best that I can recommend is that the board approve the license agreements pending all the questions being answered and to the satisfaction of Beth Greenblatt.
So the concern here is that we want this to succeed and move forward, anything we can do to lower costs for the school district. And to be honest, we don't know how this will affect us versus the school district yet. That is, you know, one of the details to be worked out. They are our buildings, but the school district leases them. We do know that Mountview has solar panels on it, and we're really not sure of what the financial situation is with them, particularly because Holden has a municipal light department, we're the only town in the district without it. All that said, due diligence, we just don't have all the answers we need yet, and it's been a process. Bob's been doing an enormous amount of chasing down of answers. It's complicated, it's an unusual process because of this whole muni versus public. So I guess my question for the board is, we really don't have every bit of information we need. The hope would be that everything will work out, and of course, we would want to move forward, because why wouldn't you put solar on roofs that can handle it? And we do have structural reports for two of the roofs. The thing that complicates this is this is our last meeting for the year, unless we thought we might want to meet next week after Christmas to, really specifically for this, and possibly some other things, but that's kind of our only other option.
I think that the, the conditions that you put on the license agreement last July have been met, and I was ready to go forward and recommend it to the board, but as I said, the more we have gotten into this and questions have come up, in speaking to Beth, additional questions have come up about the roof warranty, about decommissioning guarantees, what happens 20 years from now, let alone what happens if Select goes out of business two years from now, and all those arrays are on the roof. There are a number of things that still need to be answered, because this is town property. As far as revenue, with these two schools, basically all of the savings will go to the school department, and it will be substantial. There'll be a lot of savings over 20 years. I think what the town will, will get out of the agreements with Glenwood and Naqog is a pilot agreement that will probably be in the area of about $8,000 a year. I think the real benefit to working with Select will be if and when arrays are put on the Central Tree School, because the understanding there in the agreement is that Select will, however they do it, and this has to be worked out, because it'll be private money, but it's a public building, so we're gonna have to work out how this, this bidding is gonna happen, but the expectation there is that a new roof will be put on Central Tree. And payment for the roof will be through the savings, so it will be the town essentially that benefits from that project. But as far as the revenue goes for the two that we're discussing now, Glenwood and Naqog and those license agreements, really all the money, all the savings, like I said, which will be substantial, will be going to the school department.
So I think this is a question for what the board would like to do as far as the meeting goes. If we were to keep our regular schedule, our meeting would be on New Year's Eve.
Sure, we can have a party right here in the library. My biggest, my biggest problem with this going on Glenwood and all the other roofs is where's, what's gonna happen to the guarantee, like on Glenwood's roof? If it starts leaking? Where, where are we at?
Yeah, and if I could, Skip and I have talked about this, I know it's been a concern to some board members, and I think because of the nature of the metal roof, it's not a corrugated roof, my understanding is there's no penetrations in the roof, and then on the other school, it will be a ballast system. But still, again, in speaking to the, the building inspector, that still doesn't mean that it couldn't possibly jeopardize the warranty. So it's, it's still a question, and this is, as I said, it's become more complicated as this has gone on. It is a little unfortunate, and I know there's been transition in the school department, but it is a little unfortunate that this has come up so recently. Like I said, Select met with you last July, I was first contacted about this recently. The pilot agreement could have gone to the special town meeting, like the other two pilots, the pilot agreements for these schools, but I missed that, I wasn't brought to my attention by whoever was supposed to bring it to my attention, either Select or whomever. So it, it's been rushed, unfortunately, and like I said, Select wants to be on the roof by December 31st. Honestly, Beth Greenblatt isn't so sure that that's a significant date, so there's yet another thing that needs to be talked about with Select, so it's unfortunate, but there are a lot of unanswered questions right now.
So it sounds like the best, I mean, the best option would be if we could hopefully have more answers after the meeting, the phone meeting or whatever, tomorrow, right? And if somehow we could meet, I would rather not meet on New Year's Eve, but if we could somehow meet af, that week after Christmas, you know, after that, I don't know, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, 26, 27, 28. I mean, I don't, but is that, I don't know.
What's wrong with Bob's proposal? You said there's a tentative option there.
Well, I, on that, yes, I, you know, Select has said many times, in fact, last week, they were saying even waiting until tonight might be too late, because the, the building permits can't be signed until a license agreement is in place, and then after that, they will begin mobilization and getting the contractors ready, and they have to show to the state that they're on the roof and working by December 31st, so I think their position would be, if it waits till next week, then they're not gonna have time. So that's why I brought up the option of tentative approval pending all these questions being asked and to Beth Greenblatt's satisfaction.
I'm okay with that.
I don't, I don't know whether that's a suitable compromise, but that's the best I can put on the table at this point, because I don't even know, Beth may have even more questions. She's excellent, she's, she's far more knowledgeable in this subject, and I really can't say what's gonna come out of discussion between her and Brian Herr tomorrow.
I'm comfortable with that.
I'm not feeling super comfortable.
No, neither am I. I mean, questions keep coming up, what's, what's gonna come up next?
I, I don't want.
But you have Bob involved in the process.
I prefer to see all, all the dots dotted and all the Ts crossed, myself.
I don't want to lose the project.
Nobody wants to lose it, but you need the answers first.
I'm willing to meet again, then. I mean, if we have to, it's significant savings to the town.
So if we wait until next week, really our only optional day is Thursday.
What about later this week?
What if you did it Thursday night this week? Shouldn't take long. Got a meeting tomorrow, you got a, what, 24-hour notice to vote the meeting?
You're out Thursday. Could you call in?
Yeah, we've got, we've got something going on at the club Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah. I think I have something Thursday, too, but I don't know what it is.
My understanding from Select would be, next week just simply wouldn't give them enough time to meet December 31st.
But I mean, even us approving it tonight, it's conditional. They seem to think that all the answers are going to be magically available and done this week.
I don't know.
Tomorrow.
I mean, Brian and Beth haven't spoken yet.
Right.
And again, I don't know what additional questions Beth might have tomorrow. I'm sorry to present this with so many loose ends, but every day, more questions come up. I was hoping that, you know, like I said, all of your concerns from last July's meeting have been answered, but, you know, the more we get into this, there are just too many things that haven't been looked at.
What would you like to see, Bob?
Without approving it conditionally, a meeting later this week? I ju, I just have the feeling that next week would be too late, they're not gonna be able to mobilize and get on the roof.
Well, you'll have a quorum on Thursday if three of you met, three or four of you. I just won't be able to make it.
Be briefly out Thursday?
I think we need to meet briefly on Thursday. They need to be good with that. I mean, there's just so much. I did actually reach out to the principal at Mountview, just because he's a Rutland resident, and it was easy, you know, the school is brand-new, they knew that it could handle the weight of the solar panels, certainly that's the concern at Naqog. I understand that the structural engineers looked at it and said it can handle the weight, but... but a snow load at Naqog prevents those big doors from opening and closing. So, it's hard to imagine that they've accounted for that yet. I don't know if they've reached out to their principals. We had questions about doorways and access and whether that had been taken into consideration. It's just, it's a lot. I don't want this project to go away.
It seemed from the plans that there were solar arrays above entrances, which could present a problem. They were around equipment on school roofs that needed to be accessed. You know, the building inspector, who's been excellent for this, I also wanted to mention these roof projects where Willie's been great. He was up on the roof with the custodial staff to straighten some of this out, so that's, yeah, there's a lot that hadn't been looked at.
Yeah, Thursday meeting. They're going to have to be okay with that.
Yeah, they'll have to be. I mean, it'll work one way or another. I think if the December 31st deadline isn't met, then that will just impact the financial arrangement with the schools.
I mean, really, so it's Monday night, we meet Thursday. Were they really thinking they would get scaffolding up on this Wednesday?
Well, they said to begin, just to satisfy whatever kickback they're going to get from the state.
Yeah, and of course, their issue next week is Christmas and when it falls. So, they have a very short week to deal with, but if we can meet this week. Yeah. Is the board okay with that?
Thursday?
Quick Thursday meeting? We'll try to make it, I guess, as early as possible, as early as anybody's able to come.
Thursday, I'll work. I have some things to talk to the board about in executive session, so we can add that.
Okay. You're out.
Yep, regrets.
Maybe you'll, okay. Timing for you?
Six thirty or seven would be ideal.
So, later. Wayne?
Yeah.
Later.
Six thirty, seven would be better.
Later. Skip?
Whatever.
Whatever, okay.
Seven would be best for me, but I don't know. Sorry, guys.
All right, so we'll post it. But it sounds like we'll have some other things. We are going to take two minutes, two-minute recess, and then we'll have our next candidate. We're back. We are ready to continue with our second of three interviews tonight, and Bernie went to get her. Yes? So, this next person is Dori Vecchio. You have her packet as well. We'll be asking the same questions, same format, unless anybody has any last-minute changes.
Continue the same way.
Continue?
Yep.
You know, and again, feel free to jump in. It's better if it's a conversation.
Let me introduce Dori Vecchio.
Hey, Dori. Kevin Stone. Welcome.
Hi, Leah Whitman. Nice to meet you.
Sheila Dibb. Hi.
I have to do left hand, I just cut my finger. Paper cut. Injured on duty.
This is the kind of stuff that happens in Rutland.
Nice to meet you.
Well, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for inviting me.
You're two of three. We have a series of questions that we are asking all the candidates, but I'll paraphrase a little bit, and we'll try to keep it as open a conversation as we can, and people might jump in with follow-ups, things like that. So, just to start right in, we're, thank you for your interest in coming to Rutland, and we'd like you to take a few minutes to tell us about your interest in and your qualifications for the position, and to tell us about what you know of Rutland.
So, my name is Dori Vecchio. I have worked for the city of Worcester, been in Worcester for over 20 years. Prior to that, I was with the town of Westboro, so I've been in government for about 24 years. I have extensive experience in budgeting and finance, human resources. I've had different jobs in the city of Worcester in multiple departments. I have planned that strategically to get what I need to do to eventually be a town administrator, so that's why I'm here today. Rutland is actually nine miles from my house, which is the other reason why I'm interested. And I do know many people who live in Rutland as well. What is interesting to me about Rutland is the small size of your town. I grew up in Charlton, it's very similar. They have, much like you, just, the town's small, it's, what's the word I'm looking for? It's unique, and it's special because it's small, and you don't want it to, like Charlton, you don't want it to get too big, you want to maintain its integrity. So, there's a lot to be said for small towns. Working in the city of Worcester, it's much different. We have big issues, there are important issues, much like Rutland, just different. So, that's pretty much why I'm here. I'm ready to make the next step in my career. I've been there for a long time, and I've pretty much gone as far as I can in the table of organization right now, so.
Can you tell us anything you know about Rutland?
Rutland?
Yeah.
You have the best rail trail. I've done a lot of research about Rutland, so I can basically tell you about the department and the structure of the open meeting. I can, I know, I know you have a lot of residential areas in Rutland, more, like, the majority of your town is residential. I know that there's some issues, and I've spoken to people who live here, that some people want some more development, some people don't. There's, it's, the tax base is relying heavily on the homeowner, which is always a struggle, so there's always a balance there. I've, basically, people love to live in Rutland, and they live here because it's beautiful, and it's, actually, the research said it's the cleanest air, I think because of the elevation, the cleanest air. They love to live here because it's a great place to live, and they leave sometimes to work.
Sorry, nobody could hear you.
No one can hear me.
Okay. So, a lot of people live here, and actually, a lot of City of Worcester employees live in Rutland and commute out to Worcester, so. That's, yeah. Thank you. We're going to jump right into finance. You specifically mentioned that you've worked on budgeting and finance extensively. Can you describe your role in financial planning in your past positions, as well as maybe touching on management strategies that you've worked with?
Management strategies regarding the finance?
Regarding finance, sure.
So, in each of my jobs in the last 24 years, I've always managed my own departmental budget. The thing about budgets is it's a year-long process. It's not just necessarily a departmental budget. So, in the city, I've had two different positions. One was in the city manager's office, and one was in the budget office, where I actually participated in that year-long process. So, I would participate in budget meetings with the city manager. When it got to the level of the city manager, so it had already gone through budget, where the chief financial officer would make his recommendations and his cuts, and it would go to the higher level, I've been in those meetings, where strategy was discussed, what to fund, what not to fund, what's important right now, what the bigger picture is, a five-year plan, 10-year plan. I've also been in the lower levels of the budget prep, where I was in the budget office, and I had my own budgets that I managed, departmental budget. But I also participated with other, like, budget analysts, where we prepared the budget, literally hands-on, proofreading, you know, going through everything, checking the revenue numbers, checking everything, and really putting the budget together. In general, I believe the budget is a year-long process. I already said that. It's extremely important. Funding is always a struggle, especially for a small town. It's a struggle for Worcester. Once we had the tax cuts, the state aid cuts, we've never bounced back from that. I've been through two layoffs in my career with the city of Worcester. It's a very difficult process, so we always try to maintain good, reasonable expenditures. So, in regards to my management of it, I believe, and this is just through my years of experience, that when you work with a department head, you work with the manager, you work with the chief financial officer, you have to figure out what the priorities are of the town or the city. You have to figure out, sometimes, that the fire truck, I don't want to pick on the fire department, may not be the capital expense that we're going to look at right now. It may be something that we need to look, you know, a different capital expense. So, a lot of it's about communication, it's about working with your department head, seeing what the priorities are, and look at the revenue sources that the town has, and look at ways to improve those revenue services, even if it's by looking at expenses and where you can consolidate, where you might have to cut, where you can regionalize, which I saw that you regionalized your communication center, we did as well. Areas like that, where you might be able to save money and use it for something else that's very important for the town.
What's the largest budget you've overseen, or at least been involved in coordinating?
My budget right now is 25 million for human resources.
Is HR, okay. At least in Rutland, and I don't know how much you had, I know Worcester has its own issues, our community's needs are often far more than our revenues will allow. Can you give us an example of how you've done, or how you would do, more with less?
Well, like I was starting to say, I think one of the most important things when you go into any position like this is to look at cost centers. So, where are, where are you spending your money? Is it health insurance? Most likely. That's one of our biggest cost centers for the city. It's something I'm very, very involved with, very involved in reducing healthcare costs, but you also have to look at the departments and see where your money's going. In order to be able to work with the selectmen and work with the residents, you need to know what you're talking about. You have to have some, a firm understanding of what's going on, where your money's going, what revenue's coming in, and then you have to listen to the priorities of the residents and the selectmen, and honestly, develop a plan. It's about planning not just for this year, but five years, 10 years, and make sure that people, especially the residents who are paying your salary, are heard. They know they're being heard. They may not get what they want right now, but if you explain the process and what, you know, the difference, different priorities are with the town, then hopefully, they can see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Thank you. Can you tell us your thoughts on free cash and stabilization fund policies?
So, free cash, stabilization, add in OPEB as well, are three areas that are extremely important when it comes to planning and when it comes to the bond rating. I would be very careful, I'd look at, to see what the town has done before. I can see that there's been stabilization deposits, I see that the town's donating into the OPEB. Those are areas that need to be maintained and need to continue to increase if possible. So, in order to keep our bond rating as high and continue to go higher if you can, which will reduce our interest rates, so when we borrow, it's not going to cost us as much, it's integral to ensure that you have those funds. And you also need them for rainy day, you never know what's going to happen. You want to make sure that, that you have what you need when you need it. And if you don't plan ahead, if you don't plan appropriately, that's when you're going to end up in trouble. And the worst thing you could do is lower your bond rating. It's just extremely important.
I know you very specifically said that budgeting is a year-long process, but in your positions currently prior, what have been your very specific responsibilities regarding prep of an annual budget? And what was your process for that? Which budget were you preparing? Were you preparing multiples or?
So, I've prepared multiples. I've prepared multiple departments, and I've participated in a higher level with the city manager of reviewing departmental budgets from that, you know, the high level, where the budget's already gone through the process of the chief financial officer, and they've gone through 10 meetings. So, now, this is what's being presented to the manager, and then that's what you really need to look at, and it's sometimes a difficult conversation at that point, because sometimes what's been approved to that point may not continue to be approved. The way I see a budget being planned is, I've always budgeted historical, based on historical expenditures. I would continue to do so. You have to look at how, like, what your historical expenditures look like, what you believe inflation will be, and those things aren't something you just grab from the sky. You can look it up, you can see what the trends have been. Those are very important. You don't want to be overzealous, but you, you know, you try to be, you try to look at the history of what the expenses are. Revenue is very similar. You have to be very careful with revenue because of fluctuations, but that's the same thing. You should have a very good idea, and those are something that should be, it should be, like, monthly. You should have monthly meetings on the budget. Where are we, what problems do we see? The last thing the board needs is, oh, guess what? I've known about this for three months, or I didn't know about it for three months. Those are very important conversations that need to be had monthly. Finances are one of the most important things in any city or town, so.
So, when you start building these budgets, from whatever level you start to see them at, are you working from a zero-based budget, level funded, level service?
Typically, it's zero-based.
Zero-based.
Well, it goes, well, my budget pretty much goes to zero-based, but then I have a history. So, like, it's all historical, so I can go back, I use my, like, the exact expenditures. I use actually five years, depending.
Okay.
But you also have to consider what has changed over the years and where, some of those expenses change, especially for health insurance, those have jumps, you know, in particular years. So, with health insurance, you have to do outreach to, like, the MMA and MMPA and actually different other town managers, and we have a consultant that works for the city that gives us some guidance on what the trends are. So, those are the most important things when you go to, when you go in to project for your next year.
So, I don't know if you're aware, we have a wild card in our budget, which is the piece that we don't have full control over, and that's the regional school district.
Yes.
How do you foresee working with that piece?
That is not uncommon at all. I would try to develop a very good relationship with them and to see as much as I can what their budget looks like, what they have to deal with, what their obstacles and challenges are, because it actually, just because I don't, you know, I mean, I need to understand in order to talk to the selectmen about what the school department's doing, where their expenses are. We have the same thing in the city of Worcester. It's extremely difficult, and that's also a balance, and that's also something that you need to continue to stay on top of. The school department typically gets a lot more state funding, but their revenue, their increases every year are much higher than the city or the town. So, those, you need to, number one, anticipate, and number two, know why.
Okay, thank you. Rutland, and you touched on this, we've experienced very heavy residential growth past 20 or so years. There's a number of very large housing developments that are either already under construction or they're coming down the pipeline to be built fairly soon. Can you tell us how, in your role, you would assist the town in responding to this rapid residential growth?
Well, I think I would, I would work with the selectmen to find out really what their thoughts are and what they want and what the community wants. Residential growth is wonderful until all the residents are paying for the taxes. I think what you're doing with Rutland Heights and trying to develop that and not have necessarily residential homes in there, but have other, like, senior housing or something that will retail mixed uses, something that will bring in revenue that can offset what the homeowner, what's on the back of the homeowners. I think those types of things are very important while still maintaining the integrity of the town and being able to put it in a place that makes sense for the town. So, when you drive in, like I did tonight, and you see the beautiful houses and the lights, it stays that way. Development's wonderful, but the integrity of the town is extremely important as well. So, I would work very closely with the selectmen and the residents to ensure that that, if that's what you want, which I believe it is, which I could see why, I would work with you on that to ensure that that happens. But I would also look at the other areas where maybe we could get some development, where it doesn't impact the town as much, where you could get a little bit of commercial revenue in and relieve some of the burden on the taxpayer.
So, in conjunction with this, I don't know how much of this you are aware of, but interestingly, you're coming from Worcester, and we've been sort of at the mercy of Worcester when it comes to our sewer capacity for many years. We are currently under a water and sewer moratorium.
I saw that.
How do you foresee helping us manage the moratorium, which is going to come to an end fairly soon, this spring? And do you envision seeing us doing anything with our current water sewer district, which does not have boundaries?
Wow, that's a good question. I think, well, I know you have a new director coming in soon, if he's not already here.
Not yet.
From the city of Worcester. I think that there needs to be a lot of discussion in regards to that, and, I mean, I guess, I'm sort of, I'd have to think about how I would work. I would definitely, again, work with the selectmen, the residents. I think you, it's very expensive. I know you work with the city of Worcester. I think that...
Not really, no question.
There's a relationship there.
There's a relationship.
There is a relationship there. And I think you need to look at all options. Are there any other options? Are there, what are other cities and towns doing? I think there's a lot of times, like, I hate to reinvent the wheel, it costs a lot of money and it takes a lot of time. I would have to look closer into your issues to be able to more accurately answer that, but I wouldn't want to reinvent the wheel. I'd want to do something at the best interest of the town. I'd want to do something at the best interest of the taxpayers and the town, but maybe not continue with what you were doing. I, I don't know. I would have to look into more. I'm just being honest.
That's great. No, thank you. Let's move on to the more esoteric questions. How would you define your management style, your ability to motivate your professional staff? How many staffers do you currently manage? How do you develop their talents to facilitate advancement and mentoring? And how do you build relationships and trust with those people? Some of them have been here for a very long time.
Okay. I manage 18 staff right now. Actually, it's 17. I have a new one that starts in January. That's going to be working on the OSHA, the new mandate for OSHA. I have an open door policy. That's my management style. Sometimes it's very difficult. We have people that walk in and out all the time, every day, all day. But I actually think it's the most effective. It keeps communication open. It's open door for not only my staff, but for the people that, other department heads and cabinet members that I work with on a daily basis. So it's a constant flow and there's constant communication. My staff in particular, I do a lot of training for them. Professional development, I think, is very important. It helps motivate them. It helps them want to work more. We work really hard, like most municipalities, we work really hard. And I don't, I, I think we get a bad rap sometimes because they think we're just messing around. I don't know what they think, some people think. But I guess in Worcester, I've heard the, like, the rumors of like, oh, someone's sleeping in the car. We work really hard. I'm just, we work really hard. And I think it's important to motivate your employees and to give them options for professional development, education, and guidance. I had an employee come to me last week and she's like, someone said I should apply for another job. Why would they want me to leave here? I'm like, well, actually, we don't. Why don't you stay in the city? You know, do you want to be a customer service rep? If you do, great. You know, that's super. But do you want to do something else? And she was like, oh, she's like, well, that's great. I think it's really important. It's not something that's always been there, but I think it's very important to work with all employees and give them that, you know, professional development. You feel like you're working towards something. So that's, that's how I manage. And, and I talk to them a lot. I have a lot of staff meetings when I feel like something's going on. They, they handle a lot of things that I don't necessarily see every day, but when I hear it, then I, I just call them in, what's, what's going on? Let's talk about it. And that way, there's no secrets and there's no surprises, which is the best thing.
Thank you. Can you tell us how you approach goal setting for your staff and for yourself? And can you describe a goal that you're working on in your current position?
Goal setting's very important and it's, it's a constant struggle when you're really busy, but it's also something that's very important so that, number one, you feel good about yourself when it's done. Number two, you can use it for your employees if they may need a plan, like if they're not necessarily working the way you would necessarily like. It provides goals and objectives, provides them like an outline, a plan to work by. I have several that I work on every day, one of which is to rewrite all of our policies and procedures for human resources. And I've been working on it for years. Most of them have been done and brought up to the city manager's office. But it is a constant, it, it's, it requires team meetings. It requires revision after going through, you know, these team meetings. And it also requires legal review. And, and you also have to look at the state law, like the consequences of those types of things. But I've been working on it for many years. It has not been done since 2001.
Any goals that you've had to set aside that just didn't turn out the way they were initiated?
Yes. Yes. I really wanted to open a employee health clinic in the city. So healthcare costs are so high. I really, back about five years ago, I wanted to use a city facility. And I, I did a lot of outreach to people who do this for a living, like the Ready Meds and Fallon and Blue Cross are, they work with the city very well. I met with them as well. And what we were trying to do is develop an employee clinic just for city employees. There's 1,800 city employees. So we were going to do that with a no co-pay and have, have it properly staffed. Unfortunately, we don't have a facility and we, we did a lot of work on it and we had the facility and we tried to do the fit out. That's as far as we got to be able to have the, you know, the space for the doctors and the nurses and there needed to be a, a place for the lab. We did not have enough room. We were looking at our health department in the city and it was very disappointing. We put a lot of work into it. It was a goal I really wanted and I wanted it fast, which was really, it was very unreasonable. I realized that after I set the goal, that it was probably not my best idea, but I, I wanted it and it's not something that we can do unless we bring it outside a city facility and then we have to worry about the cost of maintain, you know, a different, a new facility, either purchasing the facility or entering into an agreement with like a Ready Med and have our employees mixed in with other people. So it was, yeah, it was very disappointing. I haven't lost sight of it though. I just don't know where I would put it.
Okay. Thank you. The next question you really answered, and so I'm going to twist it a little bit, it was about policy development. So clearly, you said many years and you didn't say how many. At some point, I'll ask you, how many years you've been working on this big policy and procedure manual? But the way I'll twist it is, can you tell us about a particular policy that maybe was a real challenge to get through for whatever reason?
Yes. Three years I've been working on this policy and procedure manual. It's, it's a tie of the city ordinance. So you have to tie the ordinance in with the policy. And it's not the easiest document to, to work with and it's antiquated. So my, they're all a challenge to rewrite because you're trying to, as we move on, since I started in the city in 1998, so many things were different then for new employees as they are now. Our employees, they're millennials, are different. They have different needs. They have different wants. We also have a, a market where people can actually negotiate their salary. They can negotiate their vacation. So we have policies in place that really don't work well with that. So what I put together two years ago for the vacation policy actually has had to be amended a couple of times since. One of our things is with the city, you have to wait, if you're hired before June 1st, after 30 weeks, you get a week vacation. And then the following June 1st, you get two weeks. But if you hire on June 2nd, you get one week the following June. It's a really big problem and it's a morale issue. So I've had to rewrite it. We looked, actually, I didn't want to reinvent the wheel, so I did outreach to MMA and found out what everyone else does. And our new policy that will start in January is that we, they will accrue vacation time and they can use it within the first 90 days. And that's what people want right now. It's much different, but it's also different from what I did a couple of years ago. So there's that constant change and it's, it really, it's based on what we're seeing right now. We have, we have job offers to people that they decline. They, they have a couple others. I've never seen that. So it, you know, we have to be more competitive and take care of our employees.
All right. Thank you. Can you describe what you envision working with a select board, which I think you've never really done, right? It's a very different animal from Worcester. So what do you envision the relationship being?
So I agree. I have not, I, I went to select meetings when I was in Westboro and I, I presented my budget. I'm familiar with the open meeting law. I think the only thing I could, I could almost relate it to, but it's not quite because it is a different animal, is when I was working in the city manager's office and he had 11 bosses. I took all those calls. Like I was the one, like, that I dealt with 11 of them all the time, every day. And it was very important. They, they're, they're very important. It's much different. Like I said, I know they get voted in based, you know, their votes are very important and their issues are very important. I think it's going to be somewhat like that, except more of, I'm hoping more of a collaborative, like we're more on the same page. Like sometimes it would, like a lot of times with city councilors, they, they have a lot of different ideas. It may not be what the consensus is. Sometimes that's tough. And that's a tough conversation to be had. I'm thinking you'll have that with a board of selectmen, but I'm hoping that, especially in a, in a small town, that if you don't want as much economic development, that, that it's something that everyone agrees on and we can work from there. There'll be times that we won't agree on it, but I also think that you're the boss. And that's, you know, I would definitely say my opinion if I didn't necessarily agree with someone, but I also believe that, you know, you're the boss. And I, I think it's almost like a, just a relationship that brings parties together for the betterment of the town. Like you work towards the same types of things. So that's how I, that's how I see it.
Thank you. Can you describe your knowledge, use of technology, specifically software for municipal purposes, communication tools, and your vision of social media and the role of tech in interacting with residents?
Technology's very important, but it's also tricky when you're dealing with residents. Some people don't necessarily want an email with their tax bill. They want their paper bill. I think that needs to be recognized, who, who you're working for. So as much as I think technology's important and the website's important and keeping, keeping your systems up to date, especially from a financial standpoint, and also secure, cybersecurity is a huge issue right now. I don't know if it is for Rutland, it's huge in Worcester, to ensure that employees have the proper training for cybersecurity issues. They're very savvy right now. And the last thing we would want is someone to migrate into our financial system, which is what they're trying to do, what they've tried to do in Worcester. I think there's a place for all of it, but I think we have to be very, or I have to be very cognizant of, of who I'm working with. There's a lot of people that want, may want to come into city hall or town hall and pay their taxes. They may not want the email. They don't, may not want to look on Facebook and see what's going on in the town. They may want another way, whether it's the government channel or, or a flyer sent to their house, some type of communication outside of social media. I know social media is great and some people use it, maybe a, a large group of your residents may use it, but you can't forget the other part. And we have the same thing in the city of Worcester. We have to, you have to sort of balance it out so the information gets out to everybody. So everyone has the same types of opportunities.
That ends our official questions. We want to give you enough time to have your own turn. Do you have any questions you'd like to ask us? And you can take a minute. And also for the board, if they had any follow-up or notes that they had taken, we're just going to sort of open it up, so.
I, I do have a question. Rutland Heights. So I tried to do a lot of research into Rutland Heights because I think it's a really important initiative. I read the bylaws. I, where is that?
It's on Maple Avenue.
I know where it is. Okay. Where is it in the process of development? I saw, I'm sorry. I know where it is. That was not clear. That was not clear. It is right down the street. Where is that in the process of development? Where?
So taking ownership from the state took the better part of a quarter century.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes. And the group and the person who was in charge of that group spearheading it, really just not a stone left unturned, almost literally. And so when it was finally conveyed to the town, it was in a shape that probably we need to consider ourselves very lucky. It had been remediated. The buildings had been removed after surveys were done, that they, they simply were not in a usable state. A roadway was put in and it's a complete roadway. There's water and sewer lines there. There's lighting. So we had a property delivered to us that was just ready to go. The problem is that so much effort was put into that transfer that the minute it was ours, we had nothing moving forward.
Yeah.
And, and that was known. If you look, if, yeah, if you look at the development plan, it was a known fact that it's not like people are knocking down our doors, you know, Walmart, hey, look at Rutland.
I know.
Right? With the perfect place.
It's going to be a challenge.
Yeah. And so that has been our challenge for the past.
So now I understand. Because I wasn't sure, okay. I wasn't, I saw, I saw the timeline and I wasn't sure what, I didn't know if it was brownfields or like what else was there.
There was a little brownfield.
Okay.
A little bit.
So just in our special town meeting in November, November, last month, right? November? We, the town just approved to enter a pilot agreement for a solar field on some of the brownfield.
I saw that. Right.
And so that's kind of on the backside that wouldn't really be easily developable anyway. So that's something that's in there. And hopefully builds a little bit of momentum to move forward also.
Yeah.
A few RFPs have been generated, a little bit of interest, but nothing that really came to fruition. There's another RFP in the works. You know, high hopes that Market Basket will suddenly come strolling in and the Demos family will just build the perfect grocery store. Hasn't happened yet, but yeah, that's where we are.
Rutland, you need that grocery store. Absolutely.
We do.
Thank you. I was just, I was, I did a lot of research trying to find all the different facets of it and I, I wasn't that successful, so I wanted to know.
It's kind of a fascinating history, actually. Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's more to it too, I can tell.
Did anybody have any questions?
I think your resume speaks for itself. You were the finance manager and the grants manager. So I take from that that you have quite a bit of experience in writing and succeeding with grants?
Yes. I mean, succeeding is always a challenge, but strategically, yes. You, you do the best that you can and I, I think it's important to look at all grants. And I think the department needs to be involved in that as well. It's, it's important from each level to be able to try to get grants at every level. Anytime that you can get additional funding, as long as it's not going to cost you a lot of extra work, which we've done that before, like if it's not necessary, you don't go for it. But, you know, if it's going to reduce, if it's going to save money, whether it's an energy grant, I've worked a lot on those. We've worked a lot on public safety grants. And I've also worked a lot on like CDBG HUD grants, millions and millions of dollars, but it's, it's Worcester. So it's, it's just a different animal. But yes, I have extensive experience on grants.
I should say, our department heads are very good about going out, finding and applying for and successfully getting.
That's wonderful.
So.
That's great.
Doesn't, I don't think it falls all on the TA's shoulders.
Yeah.
It's kind of shared, but it's definitely.
And that's really important. They need, they need the buy-in. I mean, we're in this together. So you need the buy-in. The TA can't do them all. But if you, if you have that and it, and it's a great objective for a department, it's good, like even for me and in the city, to have that, to keep my eye open for grants that make a difference for me and for my department. So I would, I would definitely do the same thing here. I think it's important.
Have you done any union negotiations in HR?
Yes, I have.
Yes, you have.
We have, I negotiate five unions.
Okay.
Yes.
I guess my last question, it just sort of occurred to me, is coming out of Worcester is a huge transition. You have a lot of complexity in Worcester that you will not get here. Layers of professionals that you can go to. You know, you mentioned your chief financial officer. Well, guess what? You'd be the chief financial officer.
I know.
We just hired our first planner, you know, within a year. You know this. So what do you foresee being your biggest challenge in this transition?
I mean, I think that'll be a challenge, but I also find it very exciting because where I am now, I do, there are a lot of levels. I do, there are a lot of levels, I have a lot of people. But what I'm missing is the diversity of the different things that I'm doing. So purchasing or the financial, you know, doing the finance work. I do bits and pieces of that. I don't necessarily deal with everything. And I don't deal with residents. I don't have that communication. That's what I want. And that, it may be a challenge. It's, I'm going to have to find my balance, but that's what I want. And that's what I've been working towards. And, you know, coming from childhood, it's what I grew up with, that government. And I feel like it's extremely effective. Not that Plan E is not effective, it's great for Worcester. But when it comes to a small town, I think the open meeting is really important. And I want to go back to that. And I think, I think I may have a challenge here and there because I do have my resources, but I'm also very resourceful, and I can figure, I can figure things out. Yeah.
This side, anything? We're good? Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I really appreciate it. Thank you for.
How was your drive out?
Nine miles.
Nine miles.
Nine miles. No traffic.
Nice.
Yeah. It was really, really easy. I need to like.
Very much appreciated, thank you.
Nice meeting you. Nice meeting you. Just go right down into Holden.
Oh, nice.
I live right on the top of the hill of Chester.
Oh, okay.
Literally.
Nice. Have a safe drive.
Thank you, good night.
All right, so we're looking at another 20 minutes. Does the board want to move forward with the last of our new business?
Yes.
Yes.
Please.
Please. Okay. You are looking, we are looking at our licenses. Here's the pile. Abby prepared everything for us, and she's having speaking issues tonight. So Abby, I'm going to try to convey as much as you told me, and you nod if I get something, or shake your head or wave if I get something wildly wrong. As it stands, we've got 15 common vic licenses. Whoever would like to make the motion can read these off one by one, and we can do one motion for all the common vic. There's one innkeeper, there's one entertainment slash pool table. There are nine alcohol broken down by common vic, all alcohol. Two of them are wine and malt. One of them is club. Two are package stores with all alcohol, and two are wine and malt retail. So, I can divide and conquer. We do need to do them by grouping. Every one of these motions needs to be predicated on the receipt of everything that Abby needs. I think she does have a few things that are outstanding, but most of these people will come in. I do think, because it's so late in the year, certainly the alcohol licenses, those are going to be wanted very quickly. They don't want any laps in services. So we'll try to get through these as much as we can right now and sign everything. We'll just kind of move down the table.
Just pass them on as groups.
I'm passing, I'm passing. Here you go. Blue. Brown. Green. Do you want any? Those are the only colors. Hi. We're not on break. We're just, we're just moving.
Ready to go?
No, we have licenses that we're going to do. Oh, we didn't know he was here.
Yes.
Do you want to jump to the next one, or do the licenses and take this break?
Can we bang out some of these licenses?
Let's do the licenses.
Sorry.
Bang out.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
To sign and approve the pending all needed and necessary materials received to Abby for the innkeeper's licenses, for the General Rufus Putnam House, and for the Rutland Sportsman's Club.
Second. Which is a different.
Oh, sorry. The Rutland Sportsman's Club. So the innkeeper's license is for the General Rufus Putnam House, and there's an entertainment license for pool table to the Rutland Sportsman's Club.
Great.
Second still.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
I'd like to make a motion here that the board approve the following common vic dwellers licenses, vic, common vic licenses. Vassacan on East County Road, Still Four Corners, Barry Paxton Road, Rutland Pizza, center of town, Honeydew, 87 Main Street, Dunkin' Donuts, 255 Main Street, Bedrock Golf Club on Barry Paxton, Dunkin' Donuts on Barry Paxton, Lads on Barry Paxton, Yang's Kitchen, 249 Main Street, the General Rufus Putnam House at 344 Main, KP's Restaurant at 24 Palmigusset Road, Tula's House of Pizza at 87 Main, Evy Evy's Restaurant to Maple Avenue, Rutland Marketplace on Palmigusset, and lastly Schultz Country Store on 163 Maple Avenue. Motion to approve all of these common vics.
Second.
And again, that's pending all information needed by Abby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
A move that we issue a common vic dwellers license for alcohol beverages for the following. Michael J. Toomey, DBA Lads Restaurant, Lads Incorporated, Joseph F. Carr, DBA Bedrock Golf Club.
And those are the all alcohol, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Robinson's Neighborhood Incorporated, DBA Still Four Corners.
Wine and malt only.
Wine and malt only. This one will be an inholder license for the General Rufus Putnam House. And that could be a club license for Rutland Sportsman's Club. And retail packaged goods store. Pleasantale Village Incorporated, DBA Colonial Package Store. Main Street Discount Liquors, William Blair. Vassacan Incorporated, DBA Vassacan. And Rutland Marketplace Incorporated, Scott Leonard.
Second.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Is that everybody?
Yeah.
What's up, boys? Seem to just have to read.
Bob, can we speak, can we sign these in recess? Can I let people take five minutes, once they've signed?
Yeah, as long as you voted them.
Yep, we voted them. So five-minute recess. We are back. It is 6:53. Our final candidate is already here, so we're going to start a few minutes early now, just because now we're caught up.
Let me introduce Joe Layden. Joe, hi. Jeff's still here.
Hi, nice to meet you. I'm Leah Whitman.
Hi, Leah.
Hi. Sheila Dibb.
Hi, Sheila.
Lee Walker, how are you, sir?
Good. How are you?
We're good.
Good skip block. Hi. Welcome.
Welcome. Take the hot seat.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, well, thank you.
So we're going to jump right in. You are the third of three candidates, and we're going to ask you the same questions that we ask the other candidates. I'll paraphrase a little bit, based on what I'm hearing from you.
Okay.
But we're going to jump right in.
Yes.
So thank you for your interest in the position in Rutland. Can you take a few minutes to tell us a little bit about yourself, about your qualifications for the job, and what you know about Rutland?
Okay. So, my name's Joe Layden. Currently, I'm the town planner in Grafton. Been there nearly five years. Prior to that, worked in the town of Wayland, Weston, Stoughton, all in similar positions. However, within each community, very different types of community, but one of the things that at least is similar between each is that they have a sense of community, they have a sense of what their town is, and look to see staff help promote that sense of town, that vision that they have. So, I've grown up in central Mass. I grew up in the town of Sutton, very similar to Rutland, actually. When I was in youth soccer, I used to play against Rutland. So I've been out here, but it's been a while, you know, a good 20, 30 years, since I had last been here. Some of the things that I do know is that Rutland is facing a lot of the same challenges that, right now, in Grafton, we're facing. My hometown of Northridge, Sutton, Blackstone Valley, and a lot of towns in central Massachusetts, dealing with being an attractive town for people to raise their families, new homes, growth that's associated with that. But some of the challenges, as far as faced with loss of open space, finances that then, services that are expected or required for education, but without a lot of the non-residential growth to really allow and facilitate that. Transportation issues, circulation, and then also seniors living in towns that have changed very differently from when they were here, you know, 15, 20 years ago. So a lot of the same issues that, and growing pains that you're faced with are things that professionally I face with in some of my other towns. And quite honestly, I'm facing right now in Grafton, dealing with some of the same issues. Some of the qualifications. I've been in municipal government essentially for close to 20 years, primarily on the planning side. However, I've been fortunate to work in towns that that wasn't my single role. I've been exposed to IT planning. Was the chair of a staff-led IT committee to develop policies for the town, implement the town's first website. Then also elected as president of my union, dealing with labor issues, as well as negotiating with the town and changes Wayland was looking at going from a regional healthcare to GIC. So dealing with a lot of those issues as far as implications, as far as personnel, people in the union. I've been involved with situations where employees were placed on probation and trying to work through an improvement plan to help them address deficiencies that were identified. Within Stoughton, as well as here in Grafton, I've interacted a lot with state officials. Fortunately, Grafton was just received a significant MassWorks grant for sewer within one of our corridors that we identified for growth. And also worked with state officials. Right now, we're negotiating a sales partnership to acquire part of the Grafton State Hospital so that we can then put it out for RFP. So I'm the primary person dealing with those documents. Within my department, it's not just me. I have a staff of five. Granted, it's like 3.8 FTEs. I have economic development director, I mean, economic development specialist, have assistant town planner, I have office staff, also oversee staff for the CPC, Community Preservation Committee. So then, what I really like is that I have really a broad range of interests and everything from, yes, doing some boring zoning bylaws, like doing a marijuana retail bylaw, to recently, we just kicked off an inaugural shop grafting campaign, preserved the domain, put together some marketing material. And basically, if you go to the coffee shop and you get your 10 stamps, in Grafton, you go to 10 businesses, get a stamp, you're going to get a prize in a drawing. So one of the things I really like about municipal government is just the opportunity, especially if a town is creative and looking for new ideas. Some of the flexibility and the broad spectrum that a position such as this position can afford. And that's one of the reasons why it really attracted me as far as this position and municipal management in general, is because I like a broad subset of, a broad spectrum of different interests. Everything from the budget to personnel, to economic development, to roadway, transportation, to regional issues. And I've worked very closely with CMRPC on a number of different things, whether grants, also on regional efforts. I saw, I think later on, on your agenda, there's a summary as far as the regional pedestrian plan. Been doing work on that from the Grafton perspective, of course. And because I live in the region as well, from a, being a resident perspective as well. So was interested in this just because it seemed, especially the community with some of my background, it seemed that there was a lot of interest that seemed to line up, and decided to submit my name for consideration.
All right, thank you. I'm going to jump right into finance.
Yes.
It's very important for us. Can you describe your role in financial planning, in your past positions, as well as your financial management strategies for ensuring sustainability?
Okay. So as far as right now, my role ends up being working with the administrative team as far as identifying for projections, new growth, identifying what's going to be coming online in not only the immediate year, but then going forward over the next couple of years. Also looking at ways that we can supplement some of the operation within the planning department. I've written and received about, outside of MassWorks, about $75,000 worth of grants in order to supplement some of the work. Being part of the management team, my town administrator is, I'm very fortunate to have a town administrator that basically involves a lot, a lot of people to go through the budgetary process. We sit down and we have meetings with all departments together, talking about the demands, talking about the needs, looking at capital needs and across the whole. So it's just not dealing with individual departments. So I'm very involved in all of that. Part of my philosophy is, is sort of, in some ways, the same way. Because my education and training is very much from a planning perspective, I'm really a firm believer as far as bringing together different people, different opinions, different thoughts, different resources, and collaborative working together. As far as some of the issues, as far as formulating the budget, know that there's some things that, you know, have to be paid, but then we also have to identify a future strategy as far as making sure that we have reserves, make sure that we have stabilization funds, making sure that we develop capital plans that then are looking for at the needs of the community. My experience within Grafton and other towns has been being able to look forward, rely on boards that have those expertise. The Boris Lachman, who then, you know, elected by the residents, are hearing what the needs and the concerns are, and then formulating something that then meets the needs, but also doesn't represent a significant burden on the residents, and trying to identify ways that we can reduce those impacts, even though we know that there's going to be some impacts if there is any increase in taxes.
What's Grafton's budget right now?
Right now, we are at $36 million.
And do you know, are you at the levy capacity?
No, we're not.
You're not? Since you've been there, have you been at levy capacity?
No, we haven't.
Have they had to go for any overrides?
Yes, we have.
For?
Primarily education, but then also another override for roads. So the roads were then, so 2014, we had two overrides. One for schools and then one for roads. The roads were then set up in a separate stabilization fund to then fund, have a designated amount of money to undertake roadway projects going forward. So that, at least it was the expectation, this amount of money every year was going to go towards roadway projects because state funding just wasn't going to be enough. We weren't even keeping even. We were losing quality of our roads. Second thing was for the schools. And they identified this is going to last us five years. Unfortunately, as we're now preparing for the 2020 budget, we're up against that five-year, and now we're undertaking that, those same discussions as far as how to make sure that we can have a budget that's sustainable, continued demands associated with educational costs. And that's what's sort of spearheading some of our work that we're doing, working with the state in order to look for economic opportunities to try to make sure that we can increase that non-residential tax base to help be one element as far as approaching a sustainable financing model.
Thank you. We're in a situation, a community that, at least for the past decade, has had more needs than revenues. So, and we rarely get overrides that pass. Could you give us an example of how, well, it sounds like you've had to do it when you had an override back in 2014, or would do, more with less? You're having conversations now.
So, I live in Northridge. Northridge will only sort of provide a vote for that exclusion if it's something like capital. We just did it in elementary school. But a couple of years ago, we had a proposal for an override primarily for schools. That did not pass at all. So that was very upsetting for my wife and daughters, who really were concerned about the impacts. So I know on the other side what it feels like as far as a resident. That is, that's push between. I don't really want to see my tax bill go up, but also I'm concerned about services. One of the things is really identifying and working with departments, with other towns to identify, what are some of the strategies we could have? Looking at some of our services, seeing what we can regionalize to reduce down some of the costs. Working with our legislators to see if there's anything that we can do to increase state aid. Looking at, working with the regional school district to see about opportunities for either funding or cost containment as far as negotiated contracts and what can happen. Looking at healthcare costs, seeing can we look at ways of incentivizing either changes in plans or even healthy practices to try to reduce down some of the costs. So there's a full array, a full array of things that are options, and that it really goes down, comes down to sitting down, trying to identify where some of these cost projections are leading us as far as on the expense side, what ways we can control that, and also gathering people together so that if there is any sort of increase, we can say, here's what's causing it, and here's some things that are avoidable, here's some things that aren't. And basically, one of the things I'm really big on here's some things that aren't. And basically, one of the things I'm really big on is basically just transparency. So that whether it's residents, board members, are fully understand the situation we're in, and making sure that that information is out to then allow for that engagement with the residents.
Thank you. What is your take on free cash stabilization? And because you mentioned it, I'm gonna throw in Chapter 90, because you said specifically that Grafton felt like their Chapter 90 monies were just not making a dent.
Free cash, my philosophy is that free cash should not be used to supplement an operating budget. That it should be used to designate towards stabilization, maybe take care of some short-term immediate capital needs. But that's of course based on developing a capital plan that then identifies some short, medium, and long-range projects. The danger is that next year, that free cash could go away, or it could change too drastically. So it's not something that you can rely on, and that if you start to hear some of the people on the news warning about two years from now, something could happen with the economy. Making sure that our stabilization funds that are rainy day funds have something to then start to to take those peaks and valleys and sort of level it out so that we can identify a strategy as far as living within our means with predictable outcomes as far as projections for revenue and services. Oh, and sorry, one last thing. Within my own town, we also did an override only for roads because it's something that people can feel, literally feel with their car, the potholes and all those things, because Chapter 90 funds being somewhat limited. But yet, with more traffic, more cars, more demands, and I did see that Rutland is, has a complete streets policy, and that there's opportunities for utilizing some state funds to supplement roadway projects as long as it meets those policies. So it seems at least on the transportation side, you're taking some of the steps that are needed and do some of that forward planning.
We're on the tip. I think Grafton had a tip project a few years ago, right?
We're still on the tip.
Oh, you are? For something else?
It's our Main Street project, which is a pretty significant project, so.
Are you ahead of us?
2021.
No, you're not. Alright. Can you tell us in some detail, what are your responsibilities right now regarding budget prep? What do you do?
Okay. So for myself, not only am I examining all the accounts within my department, but then also Economic Development, the CPC Community Preservation, and then all of the staff increases. So, we do have staff within my department that is part of a union. So following those processes, making sure that very regularly keeping track of all expenses, because basically, we don't have any wiggle room within the department. So I need to make sure that any overtime, that assistance, staying for meetings, that then we're keeping track of all that. That's where my day-to-day ends up being. And then also, for some of the projects that then I've received funding for, IT grant through the Community Compact, as well as smart growth plans, working with the consultants, making sure projects stay on track, making sure to work with the town accountant and treasurer collector, make sure all of those monies are reconciled and sold out, and then closed out with those required, those agencies that we receive the funding.
So who do you submit your annual budget to?
I give mine to my town administrator.
Your town? Okay, okay. Thank you. I'm gonna move on to housing.
Yes.
Rutland has experienced heavy residential growth probably for the past 20 years. There are a number of developments that are either in progress right now or are coming down the pipeline. How would you assist the town in responding to this rapid growth?
Well, one of the things is really just to get a lot of background information as far as understanding what the growth is, where it is, see if it's
All houses, all over.
All over. So, one of the things especially, and maybe the Wusocks will probably make it even harder, where this close to Worcester, it's a very attractive community, same thing where I live, is evaluating land use policies, and also evaluating general policies as far as connection to sewer water, where are utilities available. One of the things I understand is that there's also been some challenges as far as some of the residential development, even overseeing, say, impacts of construction, where some, with a lot of growth, sometimes there's a lot of things that become problematic nuisances for neighbors. So that's something that I deal with day in, day out, as far as with 40B development growth, as well as regular single-family. One of the main things would be to just identify, like, what can we do in order to guide development in a certain way? Rather than just letting it all be large lot, highly distributed, single-family homes, how can we identify some of the goals that the community would have, and changing how that development occurs? I don't believe I saw that Rutland was a Community Preservation Committee. Don't know to what extent with land within 61A, whether or not the town has been active as far as exercising its right of first refusal for some of those parcels. And I also know that at least in Grafton, this is the same conversation that we're having. Looking at large, significant parcels of open space that are coming out, looking at the economics as far as exercising our right of first refusal, and maybe doing that, but supplementing it by saying, you know, we're gonna divide up four frontage lots to basically cover the cost as far as that acquisition, and offset some of those things. So, Grafton was very forward in doing that to try to either reduce some of the size of developments, or if it was a very sensitive area, make sure that a significant portion of that sensitive area could be protected. And did that by basically doing limited development where then we carved it up, put it out to RFP, received responses, sold that off to basically take care of the bond for the open space.
If I look depressed, it's because we failed at doing that in a case recently. We're gonna move on. A little bit more esoteric, let's talk about your management style. How would you define your management style, your ability to motivate your staff, how you develop their talents and facilitate advancement and mentoring? And how do you see yourself developing a relationship in this town with employees, in some cases who have been here for a very long time?
Right. So, one of the things with all the towns that I've worked in, I really, my preferred method is to take a collaborative approach. And almost all of the towns, I've had some level of team, development team, land use, where then we bring together the police chief, fire chief, building inspector, DPW, to review projects. And basically, meeting on a weekly basis about development, it allows us to formulate relationships, open communication, and that open communication is what's really needed to help make sure that everyone feels that they're part of one organization, bring everyone together. And also to reduce conflicts. Having DPW saying, well, we're planning this, and Conservation saying, what? You know, sometimes you run into that if you don't have that open communication. My management style is very open-door policy. I want people to come and talk about their concerns, their issues within my own department. I basically said to my department, I want us to be the model within Grafton Town Hall, a model for utilizing the web to get our information out, the model for, I know this sounds rather simple, keeping the office open, coordinating our schedules so that there's never a closed door for the Planning/Conservation Department. Making sure that we use social media and other avenues to get a positive word out. Conservation and planning, right now, we have a joint Facebook page where we're using that for the happy stuff to go out. We received a grant, there's this weekend, there's a hike. We have a workshop for recreational marijuana. And then also using other things through my department. I have a Grafton Works Facebook that then goes to a EDC website that my department had put together to basically identify industrial and employment and development opportunities, to sort of have that as a focus and use that to promote. I really do believe that, that open-door policy, that willingness and openness to talk to people is something that's made me successful in Grafton and some of my other towns. And some of the experience I can also relate to, even if they may have been on the DPW for 20, 30 years. When I was in grad school, I was working for a town, and planning money ran out. I started getting a weed whacker and was with the DPW crew mornings in Tennessee. Not fun, because you have to wear jeans in the middle of summer. So, some of my experiences, I've had it in the office, I've had it in the field, and try to use those experiences to relate and relay that I understand people's concerns and make sure that people know they can always come and talk. As far as ensuring and making sure that people have training opportunities, it's so important. Things change so much, laws change so much, practices change so much. And that if someone isn't feeling that they're growing in their job, in their position, then you have the potential for, not necessarily apathy, but sort of like a drive that maybe it's like, I really wanna push myself to do something a little bit more. Having training opportunities, giving something challenging, you know, allows people to sort of reach beyond where they are right now to identify what they wanna be.
Thank you. Let's talk about goal setting. Can you talk about your approach to it, both for yourself and your staff? And is there an example of a goal that you set for yourself that didn't work out, for whatever reason?
Okay. So, for goals within the department, it starts with myself just trying to get an idea as far as what are some of the things I'd like to do. Then I open up to my department and say, okay. Out of, so for example, my office manager, a lot of the stuff is administrative, but also on the web, my assistant planner also provides support for Affordable Housing Trust. So there's things that are within their sphere that I wanna find out, what do you wanna do? And then we internally meet to go over and basically just identify, here's a laundry list of things, and what do we feel we can accomplish? Before that sort of finalized, I'm reviewing with my planning board, saying, here's what staff's identified. And just so I can back, because in many towns, it's not this way. I report directly to the town administrator and our charter, the town planner. We just provide staff support to the planning board, but, so it's not required that I develop a work plan with the planning board. However, they have objectives they wanna do. So I work with them to pull together a full planning department, work program for the year, identified between like housing administrative, bylaws, economic development, and then review that with the town administrator once I collect all those things so that we can identify, here are the things that need to be accomplished. One of the things that we do internally is basically just quarterly, just use that as a framework for evaluating what we need to do, make sure that we don't slip. Sometimes things do slip. And the main thing is being able to identify what is the primary priority, and then what are things that maybe have a little bit more flexibility because they're not tied to a deadline. And, you know, making sure that we keep track so that if there is a priority that needs a June 30th deadline, that we're meeting that. But if it's a window that's a little bit wider, we try to identify that in our work program by identifying, we wanna do it in the spring of 2018 versus this is a June 30th deadline. So making sure we properly identify those.
Thank you. Let's talk about policy development. Have you had a role in policy development in the town? Particularly, other than just planning?
That's where I can point to things that are more specifically with my experience in Wayland. When I was the president of the Department Heads Union, where we were specifically reviewing personnel policies because contracts were coming up for negotiation, there was some language that both the administration as well as department heads wanted to revise.
Can I just stop?
Yes.
There's a Department Heads Union?
In Wayland, there was, yes. We had, we had
Go ahead.
Four different, four different unions.
Sorry if I, your train of thought, I apologize.
Especially when you had a union overseeing a union, you know, that gets to be a little fun.
Okay.
And working with, working with administration in order to make sure that some of the primarily personnel policies were clear, that they were understood. In Grafton, right now, or about a year ago, there was a small group of us that then were evaluating our personnel bylaws to make sure that what the practices were within Town Hall were actually matching what the policies had. And you come to find out that, well, not so much. And nowadays of computerized swipe cards for hourly rate, we can literally go down to the minute as far as requesting time off, but the personnel bylaws didn't give flexibility to be so specific because those were in the days of writing everything down, and you didn't wanna give someone really more than two hours for flexibility for personnel time. So, but then also just changing, changing laws as far as labor laws and other things that you find out. Oh my word, we are so out of date. So, also worked with, with the town administrator as far as the same working group evaluating some of the town bylaws as it relates to governmental structure and how town administrator, department heads all relate, making sure that some of the things that have changed get properly codified in the general bylaws as well as the charter. So, zoning side, that's easy. The other side, as far as relating to everything from personnel to general bylaws, absolutely done in nearly all the towns.
Alright, thank you. Have you ever worked on the other side of negotiations? Or were you, was it only as a union member?
It was as a union member as it related with that. Now that I'm not a part of a union, but dealing with staff that is union, it's more working with the town administrator and the assistant town administrator as far as we're now negotiating what, with the clerical union, what are some of the issues we have as department heads with this contract that we can try to change as we go forward.
Okay, thank you. It sounds like you've been in multiple towns where you have a board, form of government, select board. So how do you envision working, it sounds like for the first time directly with a select board?
Well, one of the things is that I'd expect basically somewhat like a meeting like this. And where Boris Lachman is also talking about what you all want to accomplish, what over the next year are some of your goals, priorities, what are some of your expectations? In my experience, having, and when I have been a direct report to a board, having five or six individual, individual sort of being at chair saying, well, this should happen, this should happen. A lot of things need to be funneled and a consensus. And so I'd be wanting to work with all of you in order to identify, how do we arrive at consensus for certain things? Because we know in local government, one thing's for certain, it's very hard to get full consensus. We can agree to go along, but we might always have some level of reservations, saying, well, I'd do it a little differently. But getting that input from Boris Lachman, and then working with the chair to really set some of those things, that's how I envision it working.
Alright, thank you. Can you, you touched on this a little bit, but can you describe your knowledge and use of technology, municipal software, and specifically communication tools, social media, but other things as well when it comes to interactions with residents?
Okay. So, previously mentioned that within Wayland, I chaired a staff IT committee where we basically identified and put together actually directions on how, and how departments should set up a website. Departments were at that time, each one did all different things, you know, the police with a little siren that goes off on the side. But we wanted to have a professional, homogeneous website. We established standards and all that. Within, most recently, within Grafton, I will admit that I'm, not only my family's IT support, but while I'm not compensated anyway in Grafton, I'm usually the go-to guy. I did, I'm spearheading and being the staff person that's implementing viewpoint permit tracking, received $29,000 grant through Community Compact IT grant, worked with the vendor in order to prepare a budget, identified the capital needs that we needed, iPads for field work, laptops for departments that actually didn't have up-to-date equipment. So at least we could get some capital equipment in under that grant, and then working forward as far as developing that. So, I've been, oh, and I should mention, Grafton does not have an IT department. We just contract that out there in one day a week. So a lot of it, we are, we are self-sufficient in trying to deal with IT issues. And then for communicating out, I know Rutland uses the same virtual Town Hall that Grafton does. Two years ago, actually, time may be flying by, three years ago, virtual Town Hall in schools went to Drupal architecture, changed the older format, which is what Rutland's using right now, to a more, what you see is what you get type of design system, where it makes it a lot more easy to put together content, to revise it and put things out. We utilize the news feed for that, so when we get a grant, we put together a press release. We put that on the website, we use Facebook to then get that out. And I'm constantly trying to engage the local press to make sure that we get coverage so that people know that, you know, so that people know that, you know, let's just say, planning departments, because we're not like building departments, where we just bring in money, where sometimes people question, why do you need one? We always want to make sure that we can say to the community, here's some of the stuff we're doing, to move that forward. And my department, we've tried to be that lead example, as far as here, how we can get that, our message out, and make sure that people understand what's going on, and what the ramifications are. Our TIP project, my office coordinated that, so direct mailings regarding neighborhood meetings for Main Street Rehab, and then also online, Facebook and our website, as far as making sure that the plans were out there, people had that information out there. So they're just not seeing that. And that if they heard about the meeting, we have the presentation as a link on our Facebook page as well, so that people could look at it and link back to the plans that are on our website.
How much did it cost to go to the new module, the new format?
I think it was five grand.
Like, isn't that what the, yeah. We just approved funding at our special town meeting to upgrade.
Oh, okay. It's funny that you said that.
And what we also did was, we have an Economic Development Commission, and they gave us some funding to develop a separate economic development-focused website, that while it is part of ours, it relies on the same architectures, so we don't have to train staff to do anything differently, and also it's not another license fee. So it was a one-time fee, it's not something separate, but the look is drastically different, and it's focused really on economic opportunities, what town has for resources, as far as departments, providing answers, and then highlighting some of our locations, that then are priority development areas.
Thank you. That was our last official question. We want to give you time to ask us questions, see if the board had any follow-ups. So, did you, you look like you wanted to jump in? No?
Nope.
Okay. Do you have any questions for us?
I do, and you hinted at it earlier, as far as asking about free cash.
Yeah.
So, just a question, as far as, did notice, and I was just curious, as far as what led to that decision. For your May Town meeting, it looked like there was like a provisional budget that was created with reductions, and then it was some momentum in the fall. I'm connecting dots, and assuming that was sort of where some of the question that you asked was coming in. And I was wondering, as far as whether that was, there was a specific reason why that happened, or whether or not that's part of Boris Lachman's concern, going forward, identifying those.
What a loaded question. No, it wasn't specific to May and this fall. To be perfectly honest, your answer was probably exactly what almost any town would want, which is nobody wants to put free cash towards the municipal operating budget. What happened in May was that we requested that the regional school district bring their number down a little bit, so that we could afford it within our levy, we are at our levy capacity. That failed on the town meeting floor, that attempt failed. The school budget went forward to town meeting with the number they wanted, it was attempted to be motioned and changed from the floor, failed. And so the provisional budget, which included cuts to many of our staffers, including our former town administrator, who cut her own salary on the floor, went forward. We were lucky, this fall, to have, for us, a healthy free cash number, so that we did make the budget whole with a portion of that, but we were still working within our financial management policies, when it came to putting money away, and stabilization, capital stabilization, and OPEB. It was not an ideal situation, it was certainly one of our uglier town meetings, it was tough to get through. I want to say lesson learned, but unfortunately, with working with a regional district, where you don't have a say, as you know, you know, a little bit, you don't have a say every time, over what that final number is going to be, unlike in Northbridge, where they're sort of the masters of what happens.
Yeah. If you don't mind, another question, because, so, and seeing that Rutland with the complete streets, and then also saw that you were, along with Grafton, one of the early housing choice communities.
Yeah.
I did notice that Rutland wasn't a green community, but I saw that the stretch code was adopted.
We're working towards green community.
Okay. So that was, I was just wondering, as far as if that is something that's in the pipeline, or something that's, oh, that's a goal?
We were just talking about it, and we think it's almost complete. So we've been, with CM-RPC has been great, with kind of helping us get through with that. So that's definitely near completion.
Oh, good. And then, also, we are approaching, you know, holiday season, well, we are in the middle of the holiday season. And knowing that the position had been vacant for a couple of months now.
We have Bob.
That's, yes. As far as timeline, as far as when you plan on making a decision, and then like thinking about bringing someone onboard.
Quickly.
Quickly, okay.
Bob's ready to run now.
Bob's ready to go, yeah.
He's our next interview.
Just so you know, there's a detour in Holden, it might take you a while.
Yeah, oh, that's right.
Yeah, that got me by surprise, coming here.
It caught me by surprise, coming here. But no, I think, we're hoping, as a board, to have a decision quickly, and then obviously work on the timeline with whomever it is, you know, so it's not like you have to be. But I think for us, it's, the sooner the better.
What do you foresee being your biggest challenge? This is a big transition.
I think one of the biggest challenges is that I can be a bit of a perfectionist, that sometimes will strive for, like, no, it's got to be absolutely perfect, and can sometimes put a little too much pressure on myself because of that. Interestingly, it's something that my wife and I keep mentioning to our kids, she's like, no, you're holding yourself to too high of a standard here, and we do realize that we are looking in the mirror, when we say that. You know, there's, I feel that I'm in a place in my career, where moving into municipal management is something that I've seen myself doing for a while, and it's something that, it's a new endeavor, that I'm really excited about. I like such a variety, as far as what municipal governments do, and, you know, everything from, you know, emergency management, to working with seniors for tax work-off, that I'm excited about the prospect, as far as really opening up, working on things, and being able to make an impact on a community.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there more? Did you, no?
No.
We appreciate you coming in. Fighting Holden traffic, which is not going to go away, even after the detour is finished. But thank you so much.
All right. Thanks, Joe. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, thank you so much.
Have a good night.
You too.
Very nice to meet you, sir.
Okay.
I know, walk a long way. This was Bernie's choice, this table, I don't know. Okay, I'll let everybody take a minute, I just want to go over the last thing that was noted on the agenda, which is the regional pedestrian plan, which is in one of your folders here, where is it? I just saw it. Oh, I think I took mine out. So there, we had a notice of a public meeting, I think this went out to everybody, right, to the board? If anybody had comments, the comment period, I believe, is still open, yes. And actually, I think these dates are wrong, because the meeting is on Tuesday, and it says written comments received before Wednesday. But so maybe they are, maybe they're thinking that people will give written comments after they go to the meeting. If anybody would like to go, it is over at the Unum Building, on Mercantile Street, which is a new location for this, I was surprised to see it not happening at the CM-RPC offices. If anybody has comments, anything they want shared, I'm going to try to go to the meeting next Tuesday, but this was really just as an FYI.
It's tomorrow, isn't it?
No, next week.
And next Tuesday, Christmas?
December 18th is tomorrow.
Oh, it is tomorrow. Sorry, it's tomorrow. Time flies.
Yeah. Summer's done.
Next week, it's not next week.
Pretty much.
So if you have any comments, get them to me tonight. All right. Is Bernie coming back, I assume? Did everybody sign everything? Has the full folder moved back? Yes? Okay. There's clearly no one here for open session, unless Sharon, you'd like to come on up?
Thank you.
Oh, no, that's fine. Did anybody have any initial sort of, I already know what I want to do, very strong feelings?
Oh, I mean, they all, they're all very intelligent, brilliant, you know. I think, I think Dory's the most qualified, and most experienced.
I thought Mr. Nicholson was a little bit ahead, in my opinion.
You know, something jumped out at me, I mean, just because his master's degree last year, his bachelor's two years ago.
It's you. He seems to have a lot of experience for a young guy, too.
Sure does, yeah. He would be an interesting investment.
Yeah. Thoughts?
Thoughts? I was very surprised how well he interviewed.
Yeah.
I had to be honest.
The last gentleman, or?
No, the first gentleman. And actually, I'm not going to use names, I kind of did one, two, three, on my.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay. Before you do that, Leah, any strong initial?
I don't have any, I mean, I thought that they all brought a lot of good things to the table, and I don't have a strong, strong opinion on, you know, I was also very impressed with Michael Nicholson, with the way he interviewed, and his experience, given how inexperienced he is, if that makes sense, I guess.
It does. It does make sense.
So without knowing Skip's one, two, three, I guess I would put out a question, as to whether the board were in a position to already narrow it down to two, because I have to say, our third candidate showed the least experience with finance, to the point where it was probably a bit of a concern for us this time. And it's interesting, because he's the candidate that was chosen essentially in Sterling. They were really looking for that strong planning background. But in the absence of a finance director, I don't know that we could take that risk, and we have a planner now, and so his strengths don't necessarily match what we need.
That's true.
Anymore.
But still, very sharp.
Oh, sure. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I agree, none of them were.
So none of them failed, it's just what's best.
Right.
What I liked listening to Dory, I thought, felt very comforted by listening to her talk about the process, it's obvious that she knows the ins and outs of the system, she survived Worcester.
She struck me as a very comfortable manager, and, yeah.
I felt safe with her. And Nicholson would be an interesting investment, I think, if you wanted to do that. But I mean, who's going to stay? Who's going to stay? And, nothing against the last gentleman, but, you know, he wants to be a TA, or make that leap over there, he's living in Walthamsville.
That's a drastic one.
His resume bounces every four years anyways. So, who's going to stay? Dory, she's forthcoming that she's gone, as far as her career can go, in the system that she's at, she's been 24 years. And what I find interesting about her resume, is that even prior to the current job that she has, all the other positions were quite impressive, too. Almost like those would be a step up, the Director of Administration, Director of Operations, the City Manager, and the grants experience, somebody with significant grant-writing experience. It's comforting, because right now, we need somebody that's going to be able to pull a little return on our revenue, as best as we can, so.
She did make a comment about the regional school district that struck me, she goes, I need to understand their budget.
Yeah.
Sounds kind of simple, but I think that's.
You want to look at their line items, too.
Understand, not just, no, I understand it. That's a different comment. Oh, it just struck me.
Positive or adverse for a comment? You didn't like it? I liked it.
Maybe she meant the simple understand, but it seemed to me, the way she said it, is, I need to get into it.
Okay with that.
That just struck me.
If we, if we were looking for straight finance, and I am a little, I think where Skip is, too, I'm a little surprised, but it was Mike. It was Mike. He knew his stuff.
He did, and he's aggressive, I think he would, I think he'd be good. He was very aggressive, to the point, maybe, might be too aggressive, but we, the board, could make him slack off a little bit, if we think he gets too aggressive with the problems that we have in this Town Hall.
He has, he was involved in somewhat in the budget process, we start to finish, and he's done presentations to the public, and to the city council.
Let's hear your one, two, three, Skip.
Huh?
Let's hear your one, two, three.
Mike's my one, Dory is number two, and Joseph's number three.
Mike, Dory, Joe.
Yeah, that was mine, too.
I'm Dory, Mike.
Dory, Mike.
And I think I'm tied between Mike and Dory, I mean, honestly, I could go, I could be sworn either way on it.
But, we also have the advantage of having our subject matter experts here. I mean, there's a little bit of a process, so to say.
But can I also say, what a good job you guys must have done, because, I mean, that you have done, because we're not like, no, 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 and a lot of our key words were right here, we heard from the candidates, so you guys did a great job.
But at the same time, we don't have any town administrators on here either. We can get people that are trying to take that next step.
Right.
Yeah.
Which I think we kind of knew going into it, that that was a very real possibility, that that's what we were going, given the market.
Right up front with the market right now.
The market right now, and, right, the market right now, and, you know, Rutland, as a community, the size, the geographic location, that's, yeah, that's.
Comes into play.
Yeah, it does. So, but I appreciate the, we were just saying, we, you know, we're working with a couple of other communities now, where there's good candidates that come in, but one rises to the top, and you have a tough choice. So, I'll try to provide whatever guidance I can, but I think you wouldn't go wrong with any of them.
So, if we're down to these two, and I think, it's funny, I think we have the same concerns, but it's from very different angles. Our concerns with both are in terms of being the number one, right? Neither has been number one, and being in that new position in the structure is going to be a challenge. Both of them are coming out of very, well, I shouldn't say very, but much larger than Rutland organizations. I think in Mike's case, our concern is the newness of it. He's only known this, he's only known it for a little while. And in Dory's case, I think, I have a little bit of a concern of that institutionality, where she had made a couple of comments about getting mired, and, you know, some negative things going on, or things people say about Worcester employees, that I think have really affected her, you know, over the long term. She has been in that position for a long time, been in Worcester, been in that cycle for a long time. And so I think coming out of that is going to be her challenge, whereas with Mike, it's a little bit like everything is new. I don't know.
I don't know, there's some really good comments from people, too, about him. I mean, being a young guy, he was, somebody referenced him as being the go-to guy by many people in City Hall. That says a lot about a fairly young guy, a fairly new guy. That says a lot about a fairly young guy and a fairly new guy.
Yep.
If he's a go-to guy. Right, and Frank, very, I know that the mayor speaks very highly of him, and, you know, he's really his, you know, boots on the ground, if you will.
Yeah.
Okay, and now I'm going to put on my other, you know, I know that Mike O'Brien, former city manager, felt that way about Dory. That's why he moved her. She was with him in parks, and then when he moved up to the manager's office, he took her.
So she followed, so she's loyal.
She went with Mike for that.
That, that would explain some of these.
So, and then, that was all the city manager, and then she moved down to the HR office in 2012, I believe. And that's, that's not unusual, that when those things happen to, in a plan E form, that when the manager is looking to broaden the management, the staff, the, their experiences, he moves them around, but also when he's perhaps looking, because there's going to be changes coming in an organization, they'll put them in a place where they can do good work and still.
Be careful changes happen.
Right.
She's got some staff, what, 17 staff?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, Michael seems to have pretty good contacts, from what I was, when I was talking to him, people he knows.
Well, he mentioned, he mentioned Jay Ash.
He did mention Jay Ash.
And Jay's.
Kind of like a Gary Keller, he's got contacts in the background and, you know, and they, be honest, when Gary Keller first, our former Iowa guy, when he came to work, he dragged out.
Sure, he, he was with the Turnpike, wasn't he?
Yeah, he dragged out all the people that he knew to help us, and he did a good job. I don't know, I still think Michael would be, he's my, I'll be honest with you.
Get your microphone, Ask it.
He's my choice.
Let's let everyone hear what she's got to say. Mind if I turn it on? Mike was my choice.
Okay, guys.
Straw pole here, straw pole.
I didn't think that Mike would interview as well as he did. That was an impressive interview, and he had done his homework, he had documentation from Rutland, he had our zoning map, talking about the bond ratings, he knows his stuff. He immediately went into their policies and procedures when it came to finance. He's in the minutia of it. Dory's response to the budgeting question was that she based it on historical expenditures, but then I asked her, it almost sounded like she was starting from a zero-based budget. It was a little, I was a little unclear, and I should have asked her to clarify, but I just thought that was interesting. And I actually noted the same thing that you did about the school. It was, it was an interesting comment. His grant writing was impressive, his questions were good. I was surprisingly.
Bob, what do you, what do you say? Turn on the microphone.
I was waiting for it to come your way.
That's what the old salt has to say here.
I was hoping you wouldn't ask me.
Come on.
I, I agree with some of the comments. I was very impressed with the first interviewee. I thought that the local government experience came out with the first and third interviewees, that they could speak directly to experience in towns. I was impressed with Mr. Layton. I thought he did a very good job. I don't know, I really don't know how to, you know, there's only so much that you can learn from an interview.
Yeah.
I, this board is going to have to live with the person. I think all three can do it. I'm impressed with the candidates. I don't know what to say. I don't think you can go wrong with any of them, and I was impressed by some candidates in their knowledge, you know, showing the depth of knowledge they have in local government more than I expected.
Jeff, I can hear your concerns about longevity. Obviously, we didn't want to lose Margaret as quickly as we did, and I guess it's more a question for you, Bernie. I mean, this is an industry where people tend to move up.
Right, they tend to, right. I think the average tenure of a manager now or administrator is, I think, is probably around six or seven years now.
Mr. P. Two. Oh, he's not staying six years.
Mr. Two, right.
He's running for office in a couple of years. He's.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't know if he's a, I don't know if he's an office runner. I think he wants to be an administrator, a manager. I mean, if you look at his degree, his, he went to UMass, Public Policy. It's actually the program that, actually, it's my alma mater, my MBA from there. It's the same program, and he wants to be a manager.
Well, he's in law school now.
And now he's in law school.
So, I mean, you're not going to, you're not going to get your, pass the bar and stay here as a TA, but you're not. Why would you? Forbid him. Go get a law license and.
You actually, you'd be surprised at the number of managers now that we run across that are lawyers, and they pass the bar and they, or they get the degree and they don't go, you know, try for the bar, pass the bar, or they pass the bar and then they just put it to the side while they.
Yeah. I like that he's considered local. Gardner is local enough for me. I don't think Whitemanville is local, local enough to have a vested interest in the area other than just wanting to be a TA. I think Dory is local enough. I'll go with the consensus, I mean, let's make a call.
If I could figure out how to suggest it, I'd say you could do a weighted vote, some sort of a rag order or something.
Look how that's working in Maine. Oh, my gosh. Fighting it to the nail.
Well, let me make a motion, and we move forward with Michael Nicholson.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
So, okay, so Skip and I have been through one split vote for a department head. Did not go well.
Nope.
In any way, shape, or form. I personally didn't appreciate being asked to be a consensus vote just for the sake of consensus, so I don't want to ask anyone that, but it was more contentious that time in fairness, whereas I think, I sort of agree with you, I think we would be fine with either one. I sit here and think, if this guy won't be around long, he might be right. Maybe we're going to be lucky to get two contracts out of him. Would we still be doing the right thing to get the benefit of what we saw tonight for that amount of time?
Sure.
I think we would.
He's a diamond in the rough, yeah, sure.
Huh, yeah.
Little genius.
To answer your question, I would think that Dory would give you more stability in the position coming in the door.
Maybe, but in a good way.
Yes, honestly.
Yeah.
She looks like, she's a person that stays.
Mm-hmm. And loyal, yeah.
And he looks like a person, he's growing. He wants to move up.
Of course he does.
So there's a balance there.
Yeah.
Of course he does.
It's still, I still weigh towards Mr. Nicholson, but I see what you're saying about Dory.
Yeah.
There would be more stability in her choice, in the choice of her.
That's what I said at the beginning of this.
I wasn't listening.
Before we had a motion.
I wasn't listening to you.
A motion and a second. But, I mean, he's an investment, he's an investment, she's comforting.
I think, I think while he's an investment, he can bring a lot to the town, though. Like, I think that he can, he can push us, kind of how Margaret pushed us, you know, she was the first one in, she kind of pushed us to, to do some things that maybe we weren't always comfortable with, and I think that he could do that also.
Yeah, there's an excitement about going outside of the norm, outside of, you know, the expectation, so, I mean, we have a motion and a second.
Um.
You know, I like this fellowship that he did, too. I mean, he studied the fund, did you read it? He studied this funding formula used by the state for distribution of municipalities.
I think he's really into it.
He's been published.
I know, he has a publication on the downsides of Prop Two and a half in the community.
It's been published on Prop Two and a Half.
My gosh.
Well, you don't have to disagree with it to write a paper on it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do you want to do, let's do roll call.
Okay.
Go ahead, Skip.
Clark, aye.
Walker, aye.
Whitman, aye.
Stone's aye.
Dubois.
Okay, very good.
Let's make the offer.
Very good. I will let all of the candidates know the decision. Next step is, I assume Margaret had an agreement?
She did.
An agreement with the town?
Yeah, and we'll pull it out.
If you can pull that out, and it seemed to work, I'll just, for you, so just, if you want, if you want to.
Yeah.
And then I can just pass that on? Does that make sense?
It does, so.
I can get that to you.
So our last go-around with this, you know, with a different agency, we were the ones doing every bit of the negotiation. How do we work that this time? Are we, are we still in the driver's seat, or is it more you?
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I'm the driver, but you're the ones that, I'm just the chauffeur, so.
Driving mistake.
So, I need you to give me the parameters of what you're, now, there's always two ways to do this, you know, I can check with him, you know, and him being Mike, and see where he wants to go with everything, or I can let you have, lay out the parameters for me.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I can get you the agreement.
Yep.
Maybe we can get him to react to it.
Okay.
And then the board has a meeting Thursday. If we can get a quick enough turnaround from him, then the board will have some framework to establish parameters.
If you can get that for me tomorrow?
Right.
Right? Great.
You're pulling all the numbers off of this, right? Bob wants out. I happen to have it right here. He wants out of here by week's end.
Well, I got to go back anyway, so.
Do that, just send it on, and I'll call them and let them know, and I'll tell him to watch for that, I'll send it off to him, and then I'll get back to you with anything he has to say. So I don't know what's in there for, we'll talk.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to, we need to talk.
Is it, is it fair to say Dory was a very strong second?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, she was.
And I think you'd see us calling you to see if she were still available if something didn't work out.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
And thank you guys for all your work, because I mean it, like, I think you guys nailed it.
Nice catch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here, let me put that on. Spread the word.
It's on YouTube. It's on YouTube.
It's been a pleasure working with all of you, and hopefully we can bring this home to you for a nice Christmas gift.
Probably Bob's Christmas gift.
Very important.
I've enjoyed Rutland. And all good things.
I'll bet black hair when this whole process started.
All right.
We'll get a motion adjourned.
All right, left hand.
All right, left hand.
Reading. We'll talk.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Pleasure, Bernie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The paths we'll cross again, sir.
Yes.
Now for this position, though.
Yes.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Good night. Is there anything else?
Happy New Year, guys.
Yes.
Comment under old business, there's nothing there, I know, but.
Okay.
Where do we leave everything with Gary? I mean, has he got a contract, has he got a contract, is he going to come back or not? I have no idea. I'm up in.
So Bob has more information than that, but my final understanding was that Joe is scheduled to start on December 31st. He was going to.
December 30th, see, I didn't even know that. I thought it was December 26th.
It was, and then there was an issue with the Worcester timing, something like his.
Oh, he asked, he asked for an extra week, there was, it was on the email.
Maybe, okay, whatever it was. So December 31st, and I believe the way he left it with Bob was that he was going to get started, kind of get the lay of the land, and have Gary come in and meet with him at that point.
After a week or so.
After, yeah, well, I think that was, that was flexible, that was up in the air. But I had enough, but I wasn't involved, it was just.
Not to be facetious, but, I mean, Gary coming in for free, or paying him, what, we're paying him, or if we're paying him?
I think the understanding was that we were paying him.
Per diem.
Like a per diem rate or something for, I don't know.
He's looking to do it for free.
Oh, I would hope not.
No, I think, we had that discussion, we would be paying him per diem at the rate being paid of the current superintendent director. So he'll get per diem based on.
No, like I said, I didn't, I didn't know and don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there anything else to come before the board?
Motion adjourned. Is that what you want to vote?
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.